Good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. Established by state law, the commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents appointed to four-year terms by the city council. The Planning Commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. The Planning Commission is a policy implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, variance, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. The commission is a final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with staff in our city's planning division, who is responsible for coordinating enforcement of the zoning ordinance and related policies. Thank you for joining this evening. We encourage your active participation whether you are an applicant or member of the public. There will be an opportunity to speak publicly during general public comment, as well as for each agenda item. So with that, this meeting is called to order and we will proceed with roll call. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening and present.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Schindler.
Present.
And I am Vice Chair Doe. I am also here and that makes five of us present with Commissioner Farrick and Chair Harris absent, and I'm stepping in for Chair Harris in her absence. So let's move to C, reports and announcements, and look to staff for...
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Doe. Deanna Chow, the Assistant Community Development Director. So just one quick announcement. This is for the city council meeting tomorrow evening. One item that the Planning Commission previously saw regarding electrification will be making its way for introduction tomorrow evening, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you, Ms. Chow. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. Ms. Chow, there was a couple of emails that I saw today regarding recusals adjacent to certain commercial properties. Can you clarify, particularly in my case, am I advised to be recused from any of the proceedings this evening?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the commission, I'm Mary Wagner with your city attorney's office. I'd be happy to respond to that question if I may, Commissioner Riggs. So we did do the conflict of interest analysis for the zoning code amendments and zoning map amendments that are being brought forward tonight to look at properties that commissioners may own that are, or rent, that are within 500 or 1,000 feet of sites that are subject to the rezonings that you're considering this evening. With respect to commissioners that have property within 500 feet, there was an analysis that was provided and you would be advised to announce that, that potential conflict of interest and recuse yourself from participation on that particular item related to the O zoning district when it comes up because of the proximity of your personal residence.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Commissioner... Yes, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. I just want to look through my email as well. So if it's...
If I may, Commissioner Barnes, if it would be helpful?
Yes, it would be quite helpful.
So there was a lot of information that was sent today and we know that it was a lot to digest. There's something called the public generally exception, that if a certain percentage of properties that are similar to the property that a commissioner owns or rents that are affected in the same manner in which your property would be affected, then you are allowed to participate under the conflict of interest rules, and I believe that was the case for you.
Yes, and then with, within that, or in addition to that, the distinction of me being 500 to 1,000, so I'm not within 500, but it seems to indicate that I'm within 500 to 1,000, so that has an impact on the determination of whether I recuse myself or not?
My understanding in your circumstance, the two items which are within 500 feet, or within 1,000 feet of your personal residence, both fall within the public generally exception.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Great. And I just want to say thank you. I, just the nature of this zoning affects potentially so many of us. It's appreciated the caution you took in informing, informing the commission on that. And if there's no additional questions, we will move to D, public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed in the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but is this helpful? The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore cannot respond to non-agenda issues other than to provide general information. I will turn to your clerk, Mr. Turner, to explain how members of the public can participate during this public comment period.
Yes, thank you, Acting Chair Doe. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen if you are participating via Zoom, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad and that will let us know that you'd like to give public comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time and we will make sure each person has a chance to speak. If you are participating in person tonight, please fill out a comment card, which are located in the back of the room, and hand them to me. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Great. And do we have any commenters for this general public comment period?
Looks like we have one hand raised online for general public comment. So, Adina Levin, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hello. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Dean Levin, Menlo Park resident, and I am speaking to a letter that I sent this afternoon, and it relates to a recent piece of state legislation that the governor signed earlier this month, and SB 423, and how it affects the city and as it relates to the housing element and the zoning that this body is going to discuss. Obviously, the zoning is the next item up, but you know, bear in mind that there's some state law that is going to behave a little, that is, that is going to affect what's coming up. So what SB 423 does is extends a law that was expiring, SB 35, that streamlines development in cities that are falling behind on having housing produced, addressing the RENA goals. Menlo Park, like almost all cities in California, was running below in its affordable housing, and Menlo Park was therefore a subject to streamlining of 100% affordable housing developments. And I had, I asked a question about this and got an answer that as we head into the next housing element cycle, that does not immediately reset the clock and exempt us from a streamlining, but the streamlining remains in effect until the midpoint review. So 100% affordable housing developments are still being streamlined. Under the new law, SB 520, sorry, under the new law, the city does not have compliant housing element. Housing developments with 10% or more affordable housing will be streamlined, and in Menlo Park with our inclusionary, that means almost all housing developments will be streamlined. This is not the builder's remedy that allows, you know, over and above development. This is for developments that do fit our zoning, but will have a very rapid process. And then because this new law is going to, into effect extending the previous, that means that if the city's zoning, if we have a compliant housing element, but our zoning is not enough to incent the housing and we fall behind, and we have even higher RENA to make, then we're going to be, you know, streamlining into the next cycle too. So please bear that in mind, that preserving local control will be maximized if we have not only compliant housing element, but zoning that will enable the housing to be built. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
At the moment, I do not have any additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I think we can close public comment. I think people had a few minutes to decide if they wanted to speak. So we'll move on to item E, the consent calendar. There's one item, E1, the approval of minutes from the October 2nd, 2023 Planning Commission Would anyone like to... Oh, I didn't realize, didn't ask the question. Have any questions or make a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric, first. I second that. And a second from Commissioner Schindler, and if there's no questions, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that's five yeses, two absent, so the motion passes and the consent calendar is approved. Moving on to our public hearing, there's one item, F1. If I may check in with staff, did, did you want me to read the entire...
I'm happy to jump in there, Vice Chair Doe, if you would like. No need to read the entire title. You could just summarize that there, you know, the various zoning amendments in order to comply with the housing element programs.
Great, thank you. So I'll go ahead and proceed and feel free to correct me if there's anything missing. And so F1, general plan amendments, zoning ordinance amendments, El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Amendments, and rezoning, City of Menlo Park Housing Element Update Project. The City of Menlo Park is proposing to amend the general plan land use element zoning ordinance, Title 16 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code, Municipal Code, zoning map, and El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan in association with the implementation of the 2023 to 2031 sixth cycle housing element adopted by the city council on January 31st, 2023. The proposed changes are intended to provide capacity to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation or RENA of 2,946 dwelling units and are generally summarized below. And I think I'll just read off the bullet points without the entire description to, to capture the, the scope. Update the Affordable Housing Overlay, AHO, to further promote affordable housing development. Allow residential development opportunities in existing commercial and retail zoning districts. Increase residential densities in the R3 apartment zoning district around downtown. Permit ministerial review for certain housing developments on inventory sites that were not developed during the previous housing element cycle. Create a residential overlay to encourage residential development on underused or redeveloping sites. And allow family daycare homes with up to 14 children as a permitted use in residential All right, so I'll turn to staff for presentation. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. So I have with me this evening Mary Wagner from the city attorney's office, Assistant City Attorney, and Deanna Chow, Assistant Community Development Director. And then we are joined remotely by members of our M group team, Jeff Bradley and Asher Cone. So I do have a brief presentation for you this evening. All right, so I'll start with just a brief project background. The housing element was adopted on January 31st of this year, and that is, it's a plan for the city's housing needs from the period of 2023 to 2031. Our regional housing needs allocation, which you'll sometimes hear referred to as RENA, is 2,946 units for the planning period, and of those 200, of those nearly 3,000 units, 1,490 are required to be affordable units. The housing element contains programs that commit the city to implement some zoning changes that need to be implemented by January 31st of 2024. And so the focus of this evening's meeting is really those zoning programs from the adopted housing element and getting those implemented in time to meet the, the state's So there are a few major zoning programs that are included in the housing element, and those are to update the Affordable Housing Overlay, which we call the AHO. New residential opportunities for non-residential zoning districts, so our commercial zoning districts, and some of our mixed-use districts that allow lower densities, providing more residential opportunities there. Our multifamily zoning changes, so that's looking at the city's R3 and R4 districts, increasing densities in certain parts of those districts, as well as lot coverage. Modifications to the specific plan to increase densities throughout the 10 sub-districts. Ministerial review, particular to five sites that did not develop with housing during the previous housing element cycle. Ministerial review, meaning not having to go through a planning commission hearing, city council hearing, but being able to, to move generally into a building permit if they meet all of the city's requirements. A residential overlay that would add new or the potential for more residential uses on five particular sites in the housing element sites inventory, where it would otherwise be difficult or, you know, the, the underlying zoning now would not allow additional residential or new residential uses. And then family daycare, daycare homes as permitted uses in any residential district. So the meeting purpose this evening is to share updates since an August 2023 zoning study session that we had with the Planning Commission, to receive feedback, to finalize the proposed zoning changes that are needed to implement the housing element programs, and we'll bring back those detailed ordinances and resolutions with all the required language for your review. And then staff is recommending continuance of the meeting to a November 6th public hearing to actually make those recommendations to the city council following finalization of all of the drafts, based on this evening's feedback. So the first strategy that I'll briefly cover is the Affordable Housing Overlay. It's designed to encourage development of affordable units for lower-income households. When we talk about lower-income households, we're referring to the range from extremely low to low income, so extremely low, very low, and low-income households. It would include all of the housing element inventory sites and the R3 around downtown sites. It currently applies to the specific plan area and properties that are zoned R4 SAHO, so we would be adding those new sites to the AHO. And then it would be modified to work in combination with state density bonus law on a site. As of right now, it, it works independently. A developer would need to choose either to apply state density bonus law or the AHO, so revamping it so that they work together. So requirements to qualify for the AHO, these have been updated slightly since the August study session. So in order to qualify, a project would need to have five or more units total, and then of those units, 20% or more would need to be units that are affordable to the lower incomes, so again, extremely low, very low, low income. And then of those 20% or more affordable units, 25% of those would need to be affordable to very low and/or extremely low-income households, or 15% of the 20% affordable units to lower incomes must be affordable to the extremely low-income households. If a developer chose to apply the AHO only, the maximum density bonus would be 60% for a mixed-income development, and then for a 100% affordable development, the AHO would max out at 80% density bonus. If a developer chose to combine the AHO and the state density bonus law, they could achieve a maximum 65% combined bonus for a mixed-income development. And then the upper threshold for a 100% affordable development is not a percentage, but actually the 150 dwelling units per acre combined maximum, and that was really something that we heard as feedback from the, the previous Planning Commission study session. I think previously we had said up to 100 dwelling units per acre, so we've bumped that up based on feedback from Planning Commission and Council. Give you a brief overview of the commercial district changes. So the last presentation in August showed this table here. There's a C2B district called Neighborhood Mixed Use Restrictive. At the moment, it has a maximum coverage amount of 60% building coverage. The floor area ratio can be between 40 and 50% of commercial, and then it goes up to an additional FAR of 90% residential, depending on the density that's provided, with a 100% total maximum combined, so combining the different, different percentages that you could get for commercial or residential, maxing that out at 100%, and then the height between 30 and 40 feet, depending on if a building is mixed-use or commercial only. So the proposal that we discussed in August was combining a number of the smaller zoning districts along, primarily along Willow Road and sort of clustered around Middlefield as well. But you can see from this table, there are a number of, of districts that have some of these similarities in common, so the proposal was to merge them together. C2B would become the new CMU Neighborhood Mixed District, Mixed Use District. And as part of the feedback that we heard from both Planning Commission and city council, non-residential uses would be a required component of a development, so that we're trying to encourage some community-serving, retail, personal services, those kinds of uses on a site, and not, making sure that we're not going to lose those, those mixed-use opportunities throughout the community. The one caveat to that would be that on housing element inventory sites that are needed to meet our lower-income RENA, the state essentially would preempt that ability so that on those sites, we would need to allow a 100% residential development and don't have any other way to, to work around that. There are also some design standards and green and sustainable building provisions that would be included now in the district. There is a copy of, of those in the staff report. It's marked as example, but I think the intent would be, based on the, the feedback that we get from the Planning Commission, those would be the design standards and green and sustainable building provisions that we would append onto the regulations for the zoning district and, and make that part of the, the ordinances that we would be bringing This is a map showing the, the various sites that would be combined, so as I said, predominantly along Willow Road, you can see that there's a number of fairly small sites throughout this area, and just keep moving forward here. So another part of that strategy for commercial zoning districts, we would be leaving C1, C1C, and C2 as their own, you know, that they're already their own zoning districts. We would just be essentially bumping up the amount of, or giving them the potential for residential uses on the site, very similar to what we talked about for CMU, so it would be up to 90% FAR residential in addition to the commercial FAR that they already have. And then one thing that I think would be good to note here is the neighborhood shopping district, C2. Essentially, that would become just the Sharon Heights Shopping Center parcel, and it was brought up during public comment, and then through discussions from the commission, that 30 feet for the height was really seen as being too low and prohibitive to actually providing a mix of uses on the site. So in the staff report, it, it's proposed to bump that height up to 60 feet. And then for all of these other parcels in C1, C1C, we were looking at density of up to 30 dwelling units per acre, but for this particular parcel, to match up with that increase, essentially doubling the, the height, we would also propose to double the FAR, or the, sorry, the density to 60 dwelling units per acre rather than 30 dwelling units per acre. And again, for all these districts, we would be adding in the design standards and the green and sustainable building provisions as well. This map that was included in the staff report packet shows generally where these zoning districts are located. You can see, again, there's some along the, around the corridor, around the Willow and Middlefield corridor, and then predominantly along Sand Hill Road. And finally, one other piece of this strategy for adding residential uses on commercial sites would be for properties that currently have the office, O district zoning. So there would be a new section added to that zoning district to allow housing on parcels bounded by Marsh Road, the Dumbarton Spur Railway Line, Bohannon Drive, and Scott Drive, as you can see in the red on this map. And very similar to what I've mentioned for the other zoning districts, there would be a, a maximum residential density of 30 dwelling units per acre with a corresponding maximum FAR of 90%. And we would set a maximum height of 40 feet, which again is very similar to CMU, C1, C1C, those districts that we've just discussed. And as with the others, the design standards and green, and green and sustainable building provisions actually already apply to these parcels because they are part of the Bayfront zoning districts that were implemented in 2016, so those would continue to apply to these sites as they do already. A little bit about the R3 and R4 zoning districts. So for R3 parcels around downtown, as you can see in the darker gray on the map here, the lighter gray is the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Area. We would remove a 10,000 square foot lot requirement for those R3 parcels around downtown, which would allow them to achieve up to 30 dwelling units per acre on those lots. Lot coverage would be increased to 55%. That was a, a request that we had from HCD actually, for these R3 and R4 parcels. They identified that they really prefer to see greater than 50% building coverage on these sites. So we're proposing to bump that up to 55% with maximum paving of 20% and then a landscaping requirement of 25% for, for a site. Parking minimums would be removed for the parcels that are within one-half mile of a major transit stop as required by state law. a major transit stop as required by state law. And then as part of the 25% landscaping requirement for these lots, there would be a minimum 12.5% requirement for private or shared open space. So that would be a common open patio that people might use for parties, events, things like that, or their own private balconies or patios off of their units. So to get a good mix of potential open space that's both private and common to a development. And then for two lots that are over 100,000 square feet in lot area, we would allow a maximum density of 20 dwelling units per acre, where 18.5 dwelling units per acre is currently the maximum. So there's a site on Coleman Avenue here, and then the site at 320 Sheridan Drive, which we sometimes refer to as the former Flood School site. And as I mentioned, we did hear from HCD as they were reviewing the Housing Element that they were really interested in seeing greater than 50% lot coverage for these R3 and R4 lots throughout the community. So for R3A, R3C, R4S, and the R4S AHO parcels, we're proposing just to make the change of increasing the lot coverage to 55% so that essentially they could develop more area of the lot than they would be allowed to under current regulations. Moving into the specific plan, we've talked about the specific densities that would be allowed in the sub-districts a number of times before. I think what I would point your attention to since the August meeting is that previously we were proposing increasing densities in eight of the sub-districts. And now, based on feedback that we had from City Council, we're proposing to increase the densities for all 10 of the sub-districts. So on this, on this chart, the two at the bottom, the El Camino Real Southeast and El Camino Real Northeast Residential Emphasis, districts would get a bump in densities. So in the gray column shows their existing base density of 32 dwelling units per acre. Both of, both of them have that base density. The existing bonus density is 50 for both of the sub-districts. So for the southeast one, it would be increased to 60 at the base and 80 at the bonus level. And for the northeast residential emphasis, it would be increased to 50 for the base density and up to 70 for the bonus density. And then you can see here the map that shows the entire specific plan area. It does include the 10 sub-districts. Generally, the greatest density increases would be concentrated around the station area, the Caltrain Station, and then also in the downtown area, looking at bumping those maximum bonus level densities up to 100 dwelling units per acre. Couple of other specific plan changes that we've talked about previously. There is currently a cap of 680 residential units in the specific plan area. That would be removed. There would be a minimum density of 20 dwelling units per acre established, and that would set the floor for what would be the minimum requirement from a residential development. And then the minimum parking requirements would be removed. And you can see here a map that shows parcels that are within a half-mile of major transit. So for these parcels, they essentially have no, no parking, minimum parking requirements. And then there's also another state law, AB 1763, that would allow projects that are 100% affordable within this radius to have unlimited density and a height increase of up to three stories or 33 feet. So that's another thing to, to keep in mind as we're thinking about the specific plan And I'll quickly go through the final programs that were mentioned. There is a program that would allow five Housing Element Inventory Sites from previous housing elements that did not redevelop with housing in the previous planning periods, which we call reuse sites, to have ministerial processing. So no discretionary review, no hearings by Planning Commissioner or City Council if they propose residential development with at least 20% of the units affordable to lower-income households. And the provisions of this program are a requirement of state law. So those five parcels are shown here on the map, 700 El Camino Real, 932 Crane Streets, 1133 El Camino Real, 1100 Alma Street, and 1436 El Camino Real. And then for the residential overlay, so typically what we've talked about in this presentation, what's discussed in the staff report, is zoning changes that would allow residential densities of at least 30 dwelling units per acre or more to occur on nearly all of the sites that are included in our Housing Element Inventory. But there are five sites that are subject to some more unique circumstances. These sites typically have a CDP, Conditional Development Permit, with some different regulations that wouldn't allow additional residential uses on the sites. Or, for instance, the USGS sites, those have public facilities zoning that does not allow residential uses. We're not proposing to add residential uses to a public facilities-zoned site. So this program is looking to really add the potential for residential uses on these sites that they can achieve the ability to contribute to housing during the planning period through 2031. And those five sites are 2200 Sand Hill Road, 345 Middlefield Road, which is the USGS site, and that's actually one site, but there are two parcels that make that site up, 350 Sharon Park Drive and 600 Sharon Park Drive. And then finally, the last program that was mentioned, this one's probably the most straightforward, child daycare homes would be allowed by right in residential areas currently for large family daycare homes. That's 12 to 14, up to 12 to potentially 14 children. That typically goes through a process where there would be noticing, and then there's the potential for a public hearing requirement. So that would be removed, and those would be allowed by right in a residential area in a legal dwelling, consistent with state law. Next steps for the zoning. Staff will use feedback from, it's not a study session this evening, but from tonight's meeting to finalize the amendments that are discussed. Planning Commission will review for a recommendation, we're recommending for the November 6th meeting. And then City Council is tentatively scheduled to review and take action in late November of this year. With that, I will return it back to you, Vice Chair Doe.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that presentation. Any clarifying questions from commissioners before public comment? Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Acting Chair Doe. I have a clarifying question as it relates to the sequencing and the dates. I very much appreciate that we are here, really only two months after our last discussion of this. And I want to be sure that I understand the point in Mr. Smith's presentation about having implemented the zoning changes by January 31, 2024. And in this context, I'm wondering if HCD requires this implementing, meaning council has voted and the 30 days have passed, or whether or not we're just talking about the ordinances having been voted on in the affirmative, just so we have a sense of what we're up against.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. I'll take the first cut at that and then let staff respond if they have anything to add. So the regulations indicate that the zoning has to be adopted within one year of the statutory deadline, so that would, of the statutory deadline to adopt your housing element. So that's within, you know, by January 31, 2024. So in the best-case scenario, the ordinance would have been introduced, adopted, and then 30 days would have passed. But I do believe that introduced and adopted would meet the statutory requirement. I'm not aware of any interpretations yet being made on that language, but I think adopted is the operative word.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I think the timeline that was proposed certainly hits that. I'm just sort of curious about the wiggle room.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Other clarifying questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the modification to the specific plan. Currently, there is, I believe, a portion of the specific plan which seeks to ramp down the height of new construction where it is adjacent to single-family lots. Where our ordinance revisions would change density and, I believe, height, would the step-down adjacent to single-family lots be maintained?
So there would be proposed a building facade height, and I think that's what exists now. I think it's Attachment L of the staff report has the overall building height in a column, and then there are residential or mixed-use building facade heights. And so where you may have, say, downtown, well, let me pick a district that's more adjacent to a residential.
Southeast might be one good example, and Northwest, I'm sorry, Northeast and Southwest both.
Yeah, so for Southeast, there could be a building of 60 to 64 feet in height for mixed-use residential. And then the maximum height of the facade of the building would step down by 20 feet, so 40 feet there for the max height.
44 feet or 40 feet? And this facade setback, as I recall, was only something like 10 feet? In other words, frankly, you could have a 40-foot facade that faced a roof deck that served the building level above. Is that correct?
We can look into that. Not sure offhand, but we'll check.
All right, so a single-family residence that might be, say, 16, 17 feet high with a sloped roof can have a 40-foot facade next to it with a setback of, what, 10 feet? These may seem like trivial questions, but I assure you, if you are living in the property
So typically, there is a, there's a setback chart depending on the different sub-districts around downtown. There would be no setbacks, but once you get into further out, El Camino Real, some of those further-out sub-districts, there may be, like you said, a 10-foot minimum setback, 20-foot setback max.
All right, so Roble probably doesn't have a single-family adjacent to the specific plan, but even before you get to Cambridge, it's largely single-family. So there would be somewhere between 0 and 10-foot setback to this 40-foot facade?
It looks like in that particular area, it would be 7 to 12 feet.
All right, with that, depending on whether it's a corner lot or not. Thank you. And then where, and Ms. Wagner, please correct me if it's inappropriate for me to ask the question, but where we will have mixed use on what is currently zoned commercial, we are going to require neighborhood-serving retail. That is on a project-by-project basis?
So it would be a requirement of a site unless it was included in our Housing Element Sites inventory for lower, to accommodate lower-income households.
All right, so say there are three five-acre lots, commercial lots, and they all go for mixed use, and they all choose to be largely market-rate. Each one of those lots has to have neighborhood-serving retail in it?
The way that it's designed now, if there were, if they were not inventory sites to meet lower-income arena, then there would need to be some percentage of non-residential uses.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. Mine is a process question. As I look at the recommendation for this evening, we are being asked to review and provide feedback. And then the, the bottom sentence in the recommendation of the, of the agenda is to continue the meeting to a November 6 Planning Commission hearing to make recommendations to City Council. So does that mean, could you just explain what that, what that means and how this relates to a November 6 Planning Commission meeting and what the bifurcation is of what we're accomplishing in the two different meetings, if I'm understanding that correctly? Can I do that through Chair of Staff?
Please.
Yep. So I just want to understand what we're doing tonight versus November 6, and what you, as staff, are looking for as work product from us.
So I think the purpose of this evening's meeting is to get some final feedback based on updates that we've made since the August study session with the additional details that we've provided. And then at the November 6 meeting, we would return with the actual ordinances finalized based on any feedback that we get this evening and anticipate that the Commission would take a vote at that time on a recommendation to City Council.
Got it. Although, Mr. Smith, you said it wasn't, in a sense, a study session. It is, in some sense, this evening, a study session of sorts in that it's further feedback leading to November 6, which will be the vote on a recommendation, correct?
I think you could, you could view it that way. Essentially, a continuation of similar, similar feedback that we're looking for compared to the August study session. Yeah.
Thank you. I have another question. Actually, no, hold my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Other clarifying questions? Commissioner Eric?
I have a couple of things. Excuse me. First, I'd just like to state for the record, I was advised that I live within 500 to 1,000 feet of one of the sites that would be in the new commercial, or CMU district, but that because I'm on a month-to-month lease, I'm not required to recuse myself nor is I recommended to do so. But I'm stating it for the record. That's point one. Point two, just as I Point two, just as a clarification, but really just to state for the record, so the prior study session we had on this was August 14, I believe, and the city received feedback from HCD on its most recent housing element submission on August 29 or thereabouts, so after our study session. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, just one technical clarification. So, Mr. Smith, you were discussing that increased FAR or increased land coverage for R3 and R4 zoning sites is now 55%. And then, I think I heard you say that on those sites, there is an additional 20% has to be something, and 25% has to be something else. And if I'm doing my math, those other things were basically required to be open space or non-development. So if I'm doing my math right, that essentially means that both the minimum and the maximum building coverage on those sites would be 55%, because the other amount is 45%. I just want to clarify if I'm understanding that correctly.
I think that the building coverage maximum would be 55%. And then, from there, you know, if you chose to do a coverage of 35% instead, then you would have additional area that you could utilize towards landscaping, open space requirements, or circulation on the side if necessary.
Understood. So the maximum is 55%. You could go lower, but you actually can't go higher than 55% because of those other requirements. Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. So if there's no more clarifying questions, let's go ahead and move to public comment for this item. I'll turn that over to Mr. Turner, and could you also, after calling for public comment, just let us know maybe how many speakers we have?
Yes, thank you, Acting Chair Doe. We have hands trickling in. I think I'm going to start with the online speakers. In case somebody in person wants to provide public comment, they have an opportunity to fill out a comment card. So currently, five speakers online and one in person. That's what I see at the moment.
Okay, so let's proceed with a three-minute comment period then?
Okay, sounds good. So our first speaker will be, let's see, Jean Barones. You should be able to unmute yourself now, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
There we go. Thank you. My name's Jean Barones. I'd like to build on the question from Commissioner Briggs and comments made by staff about 10 minutes ago. They do relate. This is about the mixed-use property going commercially, presently commercial-going mixed-use on Sharon Park Drive, referred to as the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. I understand from staff what's been approved. 30 feet high was first proposed, then it was determined not enough apartments could go in, so you're going now for 60 feet. So can you tell me about the requirements to maintain the Safeway? A number of us are very concerned about losing access to food. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Patty Fry. Patty, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. I have a similar question. Very concerned as a Central Menlo Park resident, and I and everybody in District 4 especially regard our community, our neighborhood-serving uses to be on El Camino and Santa Cruz Avenue, and there's just so much that we can get from mug stores and thrift shops. So the 700 El Camino Real is the Big Five Shopping Center, and there's a Safeway Shopping Center over here, and I don't see anything in here that would preserve the retail restaurants and neighborhood-serving uses that are all along those streets. Further, 700 El Camino Real is viewed as potentially ministerially approved if only if 20% is low-income, I guess, if I understand it right. So I don't, I'm really concerned that there's not a way to preserve the neighborhood-serving uses. Additionally, I don't see a way to manage down the increased FAR becoming offices. As we know, both the Middle Plaza and Spring Line projects had about, what, 25 and 29 dwelling units for acre density, even though each of them could have been almost double that at the respective base and bonus levels. So I think that the current rule within the specific plan area that office can be 50% of the FAR, when the FAR goes back, more can be office. We don't need any more office in Menlo Park. We certainly don't need it on ministerially-approved land. So I would like to know if there is a way to regulate that while also preserving neighborhood-serving uses. Let's see. And it looks like if something is 100% housing, then is that I think we can allow for 100% housing and also allow, if it's not 100% housing, to require preservation of retail restaurants. What I heard a little while ago was that no, because we need to allow for 100% housing, that we can't require. But I think there must be some way to do what we can, so we have a high quality of life. If all the parking lots and all of the current shopping centers become housing, then, you know, what have we got here? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Chris McElroy. Chris, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, hi. I'm Chris McElroy, and I have a unit in the downtown region. And my major concern is that the traffic has never been mentioned during this whole development idea. And normally, in developments, there's always a review of the traffic and the impact on traffic in the region. And it's obviously, the standard of living is very important. Keeping the traffic densities low, or as low as we can, I mean, if you have what we have now, which is fairly high traffic density, and then you double the housing in the region, what is going to happen to the traffic? It's going to be, we're going to have, you know, obviously incidents of road rage, and there's a big concern there. The backup on El Camino getting onto the Alma in the morning, I remember when I was commuting over to the East Bay, is just, you know, trying to make that left turn off of Alma was tricky at 7:30 or 8:00 in the morning. So my concern is that the traffic has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed by civil engineering group. And I just want to know that that's in the package. Thank you very much. That's all my concern is.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Karen Grove. Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to just draw your attention to a letter that Menlo Together and Housing Leadership Council submitted to City Council when they reviewed the update to the housing element. And just as context setting, I want to point out a couple of things that don't relate to zoning, but do impact zoning. So a couple of things we observed in our letter is that the city is using the Affordable Housing Overlay to count the likely development, the number of units likely to develop, even when the Affordable Housing Overlay, and in doing so, applies the AHO to privately-owned parcels. And we believe that with the price of land in Menlo Park, affordable housing developers, well, we don't believe, have told us they are never going to compete for privately-owned land. And so applying the Affordable Housing Overlay to privately-owned land is unrealistic. And then, in addition, we just noted several privately-owned sites that are unlikely to develop as predicted in the housing element. And all of that is just to say that that puts increasing pressure on sites where we do expect development. And mostly, those are in the downtown specific plan in the area around what you're studying right now. So our recommendation was to increase the base density in the entirety of the downtown specific plan area to 100 units per acre and to 90 units per acre base density for all other opportunity sites within the city. And to, excuse me, allow 150 development development units per acre density under the Affordable Housing Overlay before the state density bonus, not in combination with it. I do want to say, I do appreciate the changes that have been made, but I think if we want to hit our goals, we need to go farther. And it's important that we hit our goals, or because of new state laws, we may lose our ability to review projects that, something like SB 35 would go into effect, and we would lose our ability to, you know, make changes, to propose developments based on how we want our city to develop. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Adina Levin. Adina, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I wanted to speak to the letter that Karen Grove had mentioned that was sent by Housing Leadership Council and Menlo Together, and I believe was recently resent as well. And I won't repeat the numbers that Ms. Grove called out from the letter, but wanted to talk a little bit more about the why. So where Menlo Together and HLC, you know, in terms of addressing the city's housing element and zoning, we welcome new neighbors, and particularly, I don't know, people across the income spectrum in Menlo Park, enabling more people to live near where they work without driving long distances, enabling people, you know, across generations to live in Menlo Park and to have a multi-generational community, you know, people of varying abilities. You know, the goal isn't just addressing a state law, it's about having a welcoming city where, you know, fewer people have to have long, stressful, and polluting commutes. One of the reasons that the zoning is relevant and important, you know, above and beyond the, you know, checking of the boxes for HCD in the housing element specifically, is something that HCD has said that they are expecting us to go further on, which is affirmatively furthering fair housing. You know, we all know that in the previous housing element, almost all of the housing and affordable housing was located in D1, and so therefore, in order to enable more housing in other districts across the city, being, having those higher levels of density will help enable that development and really be plausible in other parts of the city. And, you know, to even out the type, the development that we have outside of D1, you know, for fairness's sake, and also, as I had, you know, mentioned in the comment about the state law, we don't only need to check the boxes for the housing element, we also, the city needs to have that housing actually be developed, or we're going to fall behind and, you know, be subject to more street lining and I'll lose more local control. One of the things that staff had been concerned about in terms of that zoning is the EIR. Most cities are doing their EIR after, and housing SEQA lawsuits are increasingly more difficult. So if we really need to do the zoning and then do the EIR, I would really recommend that the city do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle. Give me one second to turn on the microphone.
Dear Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Neighbors, Members of the Public, I'm Jenny Michelle, longtime Renton resident in D3. Personal comments, thank you for your tremendous work of art, seriously. Staff, I support it. Most of the proposed changes mirror state statute. Do we really feel that the comprehensive changes will foster more affordable housing and various types of housing products to be built by 2031? Really? Will your children be able to live here by then? Will you be able to retire by then here? Outlook not very good, very doubtful, based on the current production numbers. We must perform and provide evidence to our housing element benchmarks, but HCD has already called out that we must, under the shortfall of adequate site program H4K, rezone for lower-income production shortfalls by identifying income, income, bleh, income group acreage allowable densities and commitment to appropriate development standards. I could be mistaken, but doesn't that mean addressing our single-family zones? Our one-family zones? Right? So although bravo, again, for us, job well done, on these proposed amendments, I forecast, to Karen and Adina's points, that they will not go far enough to stimulate production that we're certifying that we can actually produce. We need a backup plan. We need to be able to rezone as needed to address the shortfall quickly. We should assume that we're not going to be able to meet our numbers. Because of the turn time from changing the zoning to building is about a decade, we should get moving on approving a study session to eliminate our 20,000-square-foot parcel minimum lot size, or allowing ground-use retail for all structures in our districts, already moving to instructing City Council, hey, guys, we agree that we've got a shortfall, and we are concerned. We need to be able to provide funding and on-time calendar study sessions, perform an additional EIR to expand the zoning changes to RE and R districts half a mile off of major roads, not already proposed. Because visibly, our optics are still yelling to the world, your poor, disabled, old, working kind are not welcome here. And the new statutes that we need to track, SB 423, SB 684, SB 4, SB 439, AB 1633, AB 1449, are all here to support us, saying that one job is enough to live here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
That was our last speaker, unless there are any last-minute hands online. That was our last speaker, unless there are any last minute hands online or any last minute in-person speakers.
Any more?
Not at the moment. Nope. Yes, we do have one in the back.
Yeah, I pause through the Maestro. I lived in Menlo Park since the, in 1980s. So I'm not very happy with these, these motions about increased density and allowing housing with no parking. That's ridiculous. If you look at BART, look at the buses, they're empty. The train is practically empty. Most people are using cars. So every, there used to be a law, if you build residential, you have to have parking assigned, enough parking for the residents. So I think there's a need for some kind of environmental impact report to, to study the impacts of high density, more garbage trucks in the morning, more services, and what the implications are. And so I'm not very happy with what I heard today, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is David Pollak. I recently moved to Menlo Park, selling my house in San Carlos, looking to downsize, being an empty nester. And I am so grateful for all of the development that has gone on in downtown Menlo Park, especially like the skyline development. If, if it wasn't for that development of luxury apartments and all the amenities that had come with it, my apartment building down the street would most likely be more expensive. And coming from a city, San Carlos, that had a very lax street parking for residents, the residents of single-family homes in the neighborhood would have two, three, four cars on the street and complain that others were parking in their space on the street. And it was a breath of fresh air to come to Menlo Park that if I want to park on the street, I have to pay for it. I have to get a permit. And that street parking is not a right for previous homeowners. And if new residents are coming to town, they don't have a car, they want to park on the street and they have to pay for it, I think it's great. And I, every thing about being in town, I can walk to shopping, I can take the train to work, I can, when I'm working at home, I can work at the Skyline Complex outside with the Wi-Fi and the dog park nearby. I'm just so grateful for all the development that Menlo Park has done in recent years. And I appreciate, I look forward to living here for many years to come, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Now there are no more hands online, and I don't think any more in-person speakers.
Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. And just a reminder, as Commissioner Barnes clarified earlier, the commission will make a recommendation at the November 6 meeting, but we will be voting to continue this meeting to the November, to a date turn, the November 6 meeting. So that will be the action that we'll be looking for after following our discussion. Anyone like to start? Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. I'll start with just a couple of questions that I didn't want to press up forward. One has to do with the, the change for zoning of public space to allow in the retail parking lots that we build housing. This has been studied twice before, about two years ago and about, I don't know, 12 years ago. One of the challenges of a new project there, of any project in an existing parking lot, is the parking lot ownership. So my first question would pertain to some clarity as to what rights the city would have to rezone this parking that is actually part of the, you know, whether it's on title or not, it actually, in essence, belongs to the retailers. So through the chair, if I could ask Ms. Wagner.
Thank you, Vice Chair and members of the commission. First clarification point that staff may need to help with a little bit. I don't believe the parking lots are actually proposed as part of the rezoning that you're considering tonight. I think that's an important distinction to draw first.
All right. That's a huge distinction. That will save me my second question.
If I may, Commissioner Riggs, just to help clarify, so they are not being rezoned, they already have a designation similar, they're in the downtown sub-district, so they're not being rezoned, but we are modifying the specific plan, amending the specific plan to allow for uses other than parking and some minor retail that were first established in the specific plan. So we are allowing a, an amendment to allow for housing, but the zoning, the underlying zoning district, if you will, is, is remaining the downtown.
All right. Pardon me for using the term rezoned. That their definition is being modified and their allowable use. So again, the legality of that.
Yeah, and if I may then respond to the second part of the question, one of the housing element programs requires an analysis of the feasibility of development, of developing those downtown parking lots. And one of the issues is the, the assessment district financing that was utilized to construct some of those parking improvements. So that information will be coming forward as part of that feasibility assessment.
All right. So we don't have anything concrete to work with at this time?
I mean, it's my understanding that there are opportunities and solutions to provide answers to those questions that would allow development of housing on those sites.
Yes, I hope you, or I hope planning takes advantage of the previous two reviews of that, of those lots.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
May I interrupt? I made a slight oversight. And after this interruption, please let me know if this is amenable to you and other commissioners. Staff had advised that to organize a discussion of such a complex topic that we break it up by the seven bullet point, the seven areas listed in the agenda. You know, Affordable Housing Overlay, the new residential opportunities in non-residential districts, and moving through those topics. So I didn't, didn't mean to derail your comments, but thought that staff recommended that might be a helpful way to guide the discussion.
That's fine with me. I can come back with, although, actually, the next question, and again, it's a question at this time, not a comment, has to do with our civic services. Specifically, have we accounted for enough parks for the new residents that we are zoning for? Would that be out of order or is that within the general context of the first item?
Well, I'll, let's go ahead and, I don't feel like that's specific to any of the those seven areas, so if you'd like to go ahead and proceed with that question to staff?
All right. Thank you. And my apologies also to staff if I very possibly missed something in the staff report. But if we're going to, I, I think there was a rule of thumb that we might intend to add another 30,000 residences. So I'm just curious where the park space will be that will support these new residents.
So we do have, the city's existing parks would all, all remain. And then I think what we've, what we've tried to do is to build in the open space requirements as part of developments through common open space, private open spaces, in order to give people other ways to have access to the outdoors, to recreation, to space outside of their dwelling unit, in order to gather or recreate. And so I think that is also part of the solution that we're, we're contemplating as well.
Well, let me press that a little bit more. If rather than two or three large lots or six or eight large lots, the most notable response we get are from the R3 districts, say, where suddenly where you currently have three units, you can have 12. And up and down Roble and Menlo Oaks and Menlo and so forth, we start to get dozens of new homes. Where, where would those parks be? Because I don't think they're going to be on the R3 lots. We've increased, increased the density and the coverage to the point where that just seems unlikely in terms of parks. Just for reference, Menlo Park was laid out with lots that, for the most part, had backyards, but it was also laid out with public parks because backyards serve a different purpose. So again, for our new 30,000 residents, where will the public parks be?
So I think we're all aware that, that Menlo Park is a pretty built-out city with the, with the existing parks that we have, the open space that we're contemplating as part of the developments. I think also, part of the analysis is that we're not anticipating these changes to, we're not expecting an influx of residents all at once, but rather over, over the planning period. So it does give us some time to, to think about acquisition or ways to improve or provide more park spaces throughout the community as development comes online.
So we might consider these future opportunity sites for zero housing, for example. The reason I phrase it that way is that opportunity sites have been difficult to, to pin down. And I don't know if the current value of real estate is somewhere around $6 million per acre, but I would assume that a park is going to be a number of acres. And then somehow the creation of the park runs in similar pricing. So we would be, how can I best phrase this? Looking forward to some point, say 10 or 15 years from now, where we will try to pull together, say $50 million to create a four-acre park. That's, I mean, just in terms of, shall we say, budgeting for the future, that, that's the ballpark? It was very hasty math, so I can be easily corrected on, on all of that.
Yes, I think certain, certain developments, depending on, on their affordability levels and whether they're subdividing the lot, would need to pay into some, some potential OREC and LUF fees, which would give us source of, of funding there. But essentially, it was studied in the subsequent environmental impact report for the project's public services and recreation. And then that, that impact was found to be less than significant due to the fact that development is likely to, to occur incrementally over time and that there's been an effort to spread the new population throughout the community so as not to overwhelm any certain existing parks, to make that sort of an opportunity, an effort to, to share that development throughout.
All right. I appreciate the, the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs, for allowing the interruption earlier. And so as suggested, we might have this discussion be centered around the Affordable Housing Overlay before moving on to some of the other topics. So with that clarification to the discussion, would other commissioners like to provide comments on the Affordable Housing Overlay? Commissioner Barnes?
And I'm sorry, I don't know where this would fit in, so maybe you can counsel me on that. If I want to further the line of, of discussion Mr. Riggs just had related to open space, in which bullet point would that be, so I can make sure that I'm getting in the right, the right one?
Well, feel free to correct me, but I don't necessarily see it as being specific to any of the other bullet points, so I would say this is a.
Is a good time for it?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So in hearing Mr. Riggs's comments, it reminds me, and I'll, and I'll go back on the record, I did vote against the SEIR because I think that the SEIR under-indexed for recreational space in the context of the additional housing units. And I say that specifically because the metric that was called out for the SEIR, called out of per capita versus acreage available. And when you look at the, the opens, the park space in Menlo Park, you'll see there's a large swath of it in Bayfront Bedwell. So the, the majority, I think, if you, on aggregate, Bayfront Bedwell Park represents more than the combined park space for the city. So yes, when the consultant did answer the question that yes, numerically, the city is in alignment, because he referenced it against the general plan and has called out in the general plan the metric. What I want to highlight is that space is not in the center of, of Menlo Park where the development is being contemplated for. So I think there's a mismatch in terms of what that data was used for to justify that in the SEIR not being a significant impact, when in fact, it is, because I don't think it's correctly calculated. And I just, from a practical perspective, and I do get that this is a housing element discussion, but this is germane to, to the build-out of it. I mean, just anecdotally speaking, when you go to Burgess Park and you see five different soccer teams trying to practice on the available area, currently, as is, there's not enough open recreational space for our youth to do organized activities. And I think you see that across any of the organized sports groups that use fields. And I think you see that across any of the organized sports groups that use fields in the city. So, you know, for that reason, I think that this, the housing element doesn't take into account the need for recreational facilities in the city. And I don't think the SEI, the SEIR correctly addressed that, based on how it calculated what's, you know, a reasonable threshold for that. So that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Commissioner Schindler.
Thank you, Vice Chair Doe. I want to be supportive and, and show my, my additional support for this discussion about open spaces, about park spaces. I hope that when we start to, when we are done with this zoning exercise, and we are contemplating the list of developments that are in our pipeline, and hopefully will be added to our pipeline over the course of the next couple of years, we take the enthusiasm for ensuring open spaces, community spaces, and, and community amenities, back into those individual development conversations. For now, though, I'm going to sort of go back to the request that staff has made, which is for feedback on these seven major topics that we will be changing zoning and other ordinances to, in order to respond to the requirements of the housing element, so that we can have these, these ordinances in place by the end of January, and take one step further, one step closer to regaining control over, and the, the development that happens in our city. So, Vice Chair, whoops, at your request, I'll sort of start with my feedback on the modifications to the, the AHO. That's, was your first category?
Please.
Okay. Couple of, of just thank-yous. I appreciate the additional detail, the extensive detail in the Attachment A, that lays out all of the different scenarios for the affordable housing bonus levels. It greatly clarified sort of what, the sliding scale that we talked about in concept in, in August, but I sort of wasn't able to fully wrap my head around. I appreciate that. I also appreciate the examples of what the math is when you combine our city's AHO with the, the state examples. I'll come back to that in a second. And I think including the R3 areas near downtown in the AHO is, is a win, in terms of our ability to eventually hit our arena numbers. One of the things that wasn't apparent to me in the staff report, and I will just say it publicly, although I don't think it necessarily needs to be incorporated into the zoning changes, you know, we talked about the opportunity for developers to, developers essentially have three, three ways to proceed, if they're interested in pursuing bonus density. They can take advantage of our affordable housing overlay, that's the first path. They can choose just the state's bonus densities, or they can choose to combine those three things. And of course, we don't have to document everything that's open to a developer from the state regulations, but I think it's, it's good to mention here, in a public forum, that there are a number of scenarios where a developer might choose essentially none of the above, from what's in our staff report. They might choose just to pursue the state bonus densities. That was sort of an interesting consideration for me. And I think it's particularly relevant to, I think I'm going to get this, was it 1973? Which was the one that, within half a mile, 100%, affordable housing, within a half mile of a transit, mile, a transit, a transit hub, that there's unlimited density. So I think that's an example of an instance where a developer might choose to look at the state guidelines, rather than some of the things that we've laid out here today. I wanted to weigh in on the threshold for combining, hang on, right, the, the threshold, it lays out, there's a requirement that, in order to combine the AHO with the state density bonus, 25% of the total units in development must be designated as affordable, if I've understood that correctly. So I also understand that HCD asked us, in, in their feedback to us, they asked for us to remove any potential conflict between our own AHO and the state bonus. I was concerned that having there be a threshold, that 25% threshold, could be viewed by HCD as being in conflict, or constraining the use of the state bonus. Has that been, we have any feedback from HCD that that's regarding that, that concern?
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. So we have been in conversations with HCD on the comments that we have received. Our understanding is that the potential conflict, which we've resolved in the proposed ordinance, is the ability to add the two together. So currently, our AHO is not additive, but under the new regulations, you would be able to. And as you expressed in the previous comments, one of the three options would be to take advantage of them together. AHO is our affordable, proposed affordable housing overlay is something above and beyond, and so that is for each jurisdiction to give them the flexibility on how to actually implement it.
Okay, so the concern was that they weren't additive, rather than we were putting some kind of, some, some kind of threshold on combining them?
Okay.
Thank you. Some of my, there are a couple of places in the descriptions in the staff report where I wasn't sure if the definition of percentage of affordable housing was consistent all the way through. I suspect that's just a nuance, and when it shows up in the ordinances, it will be very clear what the definition is, whether it's before or after the bonuses happen. That's more to commentary. I did have, I think this is commentary on the incentives. I appreciate that there is flexibility being, being indicated here, so that when there is greater density happening, that there is flexibility with regard to FAR, height, open spaces, and some of the other development parameters. When I read them, though, it struck me that these could be hard to explain and/or enforce. So I would just ask that as these things get documented in the ordinances, it's clear how a developer would engage with staff, or sort of whatever other process is appropriate to make these things happen. I think there were some examples where it was pretty clear, I won't read them all out here, but in particular, there was one about, you know, coverage and setbacks that were in the amount necessary to physically accommodate the increased density, and to me, that sounded And I think Commissioner, Vice Chair Doe, that was, that was it for me for the AHO, so I will sit on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Eric?
So I just want to start by thanking staff for the quick and very detailed work that we're back here only two months after the prior conversation. I do want to push on what I understand to be feedback from HCD, that they are asking for evidence or some other form of proof that developers would take us up on the AHO at the rate that our submission seems to suggest. And I applaud the increase of, you know, when combining to 150 dwelling units per acre, but I'm still wondering if we have, if the city has any evidence or any increased evidence that would address HCD's concern about whether or not that will be enough for private developers to take us up on that and actually build that housing. Because otherwise, my overall fear here, as has been expressed multiple times before, is that we don't end up with a compliant housing element.
If I may respond to that?
Please.
Thank you. So in our conversations with HCD, I, I believe our understanding, and please correct me, is HCD wanted evidence on how we would, how use of the AHO with the density would arrive at the 55 dwellings to the acre, which was used in our site's capacity. And so I think we were able to demonstrate, the zoning by itself would often have the 55 dwelling units to the acres, particularly in the specific plan where densities are upwards to the 100 dwelling units to the acre. So even without the AHO, we could achieve the 55 dwellings to the acre. And then if we were looking at a project with a base density of 40 dwellings to the acre, with the AHO, the percentage that would be allowed for the 20% low income would be able to achieve that 55 dwellings to the acre. So I think we have satisfied the, the question that was raised by HCD.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Eric. I'm looking at Commissioner Schindler, he looked like you are, maybe had a follow-up question to that, or?
You see me sitting here debating, just wanting to ensure that I, as well as all the other commissioners and, and members of the public who might be attending or, and listening in, have a full understanding of the density bonus table that's been presented here, because I think it's a new addition from the last time we looked at this, because it allows for nuances in the bonus associated with different levels of income, right? So it specifically differentiates between very low income and low income. I think that was a piece of feedback that this commission has given in the past, in being able to give additional, essentially incentive to developers at, providing units at the very low income. And so just, Mr. Smith, just to be clear, I think you verbally walked through it in your presentation, but this table essentially says, for example, that if there are 10% of units that are affordable, and they are very low income, the density bonus is, in this case, 32.5%. But if those 10% are low income, the density bonus is 20%. So we're essentially saying that we are giving a meaningful boost to developers who are giving very low income compared to low income.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to be sure that I understood that, but also, and then also just take an opportunity to say thank you for acknowledging the feedback from, from this commission and also from council, because I know that that was a concern in their discussion, too.
Well, while others are considering their comments on the affordable housing overlay, and thank you, Commissioner Eric and Schindler for your comments, I just wanted to say what's been said before, and by staff, too. I appreciate you responding to feedback from the city council and this commission and affordable housing developers, and using the HO and state density bonus to, being conscious about not ratcheting up density necessarily across the board, but creating a sliding scale such that 100% affordable projects can achieve that 150 dwelling units per acre. And, you know, hearing the public commenters asking for even, even more density than what is proposed here, which is already an increase from the past, and also knowing that there are other community members, other commissioners, and even city council members who maybe have a little bit more reservations about that. I'm appreciative of staff balancing it, so that we have increased the numbers, and just want to acknowledge to your community members that it's not perfect. And I was moved by Ms. Michelle's diagram of a lot of red kind of showing, just, I believe it was showing the single-family zoning districts in our, in our city, and just, you know, what kind of city do we want to be? So I just want to say that even the things are not perfect, and maybe not what we all want. I appreciate staff kind of walking the line between maximizing density and, you know, other, other concerns, reservations within the community. To check in with staff, do you feel like you have feedback on the affordable housing overlay? And if other commissioners have comments or questions on this topic, please feel free.
I think if, if all the commission has given their feedback, that's definitely helpful, and I think that's what we need to finish and bring it back to you, November 6th.
Great, thank you. So the next, let's go back here. The next area of discussion is new residential opportunities in non-residential districts. I do want to point out that it includes the office zoning, that Commissioner Riggs, you will need to recuse yourself from. So I was going to propose, if it's amenable to you, that we discuss all zoning districts but the office, with your participation. Discuss the office zoning with you, with you recused, and then bring it back to continue the, the rest of the discussion.
Challenging, but reasonable.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that bifurcation. What is the, what's the separation, and for what purpose?
That Commissioner Riggs, and Ms. Wagner, if you can explain this better, Commissioner Riggs, has to recuse himself with regards to the office district parcels?
Oh, he has? Okay. Thank you.
And so we'll be covering all the other districts listed in this item, except the office.
Got it, thank you.
At this time.
So that would be everything but C1, is our, is our best guess?
Well, I, I don't feel comfortable guessing. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Wagner to answer.
Vice Chair Doe, if I may, I think the way that you could break this one down is, there's almost, you can almost think of it as like, the way to proceed this evening would be three separate strategies. So you could first talk about the, the combination of certain zoning districts into the CMU Neighborhood Mixed-Use District. Then you could talk about the commercial districts to remain, where we're adding residential uses, so that would be C1, C1C, and C2. And then, to finish off this topic, then discuss O separately.
That sounds great. Thank you for the clarification. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Riggs?
As long as it's clear to you.
Okay, just don't talk about the office parcels, anything affecting them, Commissioner Would anyone like to start?
I'm happy to just say that there are lots of things that are in here that are exciting to me, but I think this is one of the more exciting ones, both because I think of its potential to create vibrant areas within the city, and its simplification of the zoning code, which I think is an admirable goal, admirable goal in and of itself. I'll leave it there.
Commissioner Schindler, thank you, Commissioner Eric. Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you. Like Commissioner Eric, I'm very excited about this. Probably once a week, I get someone who sends me an article about all of the empty office space, whether it's in our community or others, and then puts it alongside the question of affordable housing. And I think this is Menlo Park taking a step in a very positive direction in addressing those, those questions. So let me try and use the categorizations that have been laid out here. My first set of questions are about the commercial zones that are being combined into the, the C-dash MU. There are a number of places in the staff report that talk about which land uses are going to, in this new, in this new category, so it's the Modified C2B, will be permitted, or conditional, or administratively permitted, and so on. I tried to, on my own, just do a little bit of a comparison. I found it challenging, sort of a today versus future tense. I know we'll get that when we get the actual wording of the ordinances, but I wanted to ask it as a... ask it as a broad question. For these existing commercial zones that are being merged into CMU, will any of them lose permitted uses or can even permitted conditional or sort of administratively permitted uses? And that's for either parcel, for current uses or pipeline uses. For example, the one that was contemplated in the letter with the city received today about drive-throughs.
So we made a conscious effort not to remove any permitted uses that exist in any of these zoning districts from being available as part of the new district. So we've accommodated all of the existing permitted uses. The conditional uses, I believe the only one that's been removed was mini warehouse storage was an option. And then we did add in a new one, child daycare centers was not previously permitted. Fast food is also another one that is new to this ordinance, but there's actually a definition in our code. And we looked into that and fast food actually fits a lot of what you might call today just sort of a fast casual restaurant, a number of establishments like that in the community already. I think with regard to the letter from Willow Village that was received today, they already have a vesting tentative map and they already have a development agreement. And the permitted uses in the C2S, which is the existing district there, would be sort of honored under their existing entitlements that they have in place. So I don't foresee any issues there. We would also build in as well a non-conformity exemption for properties as well. So that would go into the zoning code. Whereas if a building was destroyed by a disaster or something like that, they would not need to rebuild or sort of utilize the new CMU requirements. They could rebuild under their old requirements, things like that. So we believe we've accommodated everything in the new zoning that should satisfy the needs and interests of the community.
Thank you. I'm pleased to hear that sort of the, and of course, I shouldn't be surprised that the thought has already gone into retaining the permitted uses. Can I just ask a follow-up question? Your comment about being allowed to rebuild in the event of a disaster for something that is non-conforming seems to indicate that an existing site could become non-conforming under this, under the new zoning? Or have I misunderstood?
So we would, there would be an exemption for if a parcel had a use permit or conditional development permit, those entitlements that were in place would be essentially honored, continue to be honored as they exist now. So I don't believe we would be creating any non-conformity for any of the sites that have been identified.
Thank you. My next question is about the requirement that sites that aren't housing element sites in the new CMU would have... Sorry, I don't have the number here. What's the number for, there has to be 20, is it 20 or 25%?
20% affordable.
20%, that's what, okay, sorry. Continue to have a 20% non-residential use. And I appreciate that this is a creative solution in response to the feedback that started here and council also gave about trying to ensure that we retain neighborhood-serving commercial and retail. This isn't a deal breaker for me, but I'm just, this feels just a little too restrictive. I think there are other places in here where we're talking about having larger FARs as sort of an incentive for having, or keeping, in this case, I guess, keeping neighborhood-serving commercial and retail, in this case, requiring it. I'm mostly just sort of voicing, I'm not totally sure. I'm not unsupportive of it, but it's just a little too close to standing in the way of potentially a housing-only solution.
If I may clarify what I just said a moment ago.
Yeah.
I thought you were referring to the affordability level. There is not a certain percentage of non-residential uses that would be required. There's some flexibility there, but to your point, it is set up as sort of a requirement.
That's what it is, thank you. I'm, there are a lot of things that are 20 and 25% in this entire document, so thank you. So that's, it's not a deal breaker, but that's, it feels a little restrictive to me. And then I wanted to ask final question, sorry, about the design standards for the new CMU. We've talked about the importance of design standards in a number of places here and a number of commissioners have enthusiastically thrown support behind them, myself included. In, they're labeled as an example in the document, but I think, Mr. Smith, you said they are more than an example, they're pretty close to what we would intend to use in this case.
That's right, yes. Essentially, they'd be attached to the end of each of these zoning districts.
Okay. So again, I just eyeballed it a little bit. It looks like these standards draw heavily from the RMU design standards and also from the R4S design standards. Could you just talk about the sort of guiding principles used to develop these design principles for the CMU and why it was appropriate to draw from those other areas?
Sure. I think you're correct. Many of them are taken from the residential mixed-use zoning district in the Bayfront area and then the C4, sorry, R4S zoning district. And I think if you look at the R4S zoning district, we've tried to take some of these with objectivity in mind, making sure that they are something that tends to have sort of a numeric standard or something definitive that could be implemented and that a developer feels some confidence that if they apply this certain ratio measurement, modulation, whatever, to a project, then it gives a little bit more clarity about what the expectations are. I think we've applied it based on our experience of implementing these in the zoning districts where they already exist and also because we have had these in certain zoning districts for a while now. I think it also gives the development community, who already works in Menlo Park, a sense of familiarity for what the expectations are, what the design standards are. So trying to build on that as well.
Thank you, that's helpful. I'm probably going to bring up the design standards again when we get to R3. Thank you, Vice Chair Doe, that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Just a follow-up comment, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Feel free to go first and I'll, I'm happy.
Oh, sure, I was just going to react to, you didn't not support it, but the requiring of a non-residential component for sites where that's allowed. I actually found that to be the beginnings of response to, we've heard from many community members on a concern of neighborhood-serving retail. So I just wanted to just react to that. Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Through the chair to staff, one of the things I wanted to ask about in this evening's meeting was childcare, daycare within buildings. And I'm going to try to piece this together here. So we've got the, the bullet point they're on right now is about mixed use. And it sounds as though, for instance, ground floor childcare will be permissible as a use in some of the new commercial zoning districts. Is that a correct statement?
That's right, yes.
Could you, are you able to talk a little bit more about any of those details? Or is it, how's it, could you paint a broad stroke about what that is? I guess allow me to be a little bit more specific. So usually with childcare, there are prescriptive, there can be prescriptive amounts of outdoor space associated with childcare. And there can be, obviously, the build-outs of childcare centers have requirements that are different from other build-outs in commercial spaces. So in terms of allowing, is it, is it as vanilla as listing as a permitted use in a zoning district and then a particular developer can have at it if in fact they want to put that there? And I guess the tail of that would be, are there any incentives built into the zoning, for instance, that would allow for increased density in return for adding in childcare? Because it is, and after you say that, I'll just, I'll say some more, thank you.
So we haven't really tailored the incentives specific to childcare. I would say that is definitely a consideration. The way it's listed here is childcare centers as a conditional use. So I do think, like you're saying, there are certain instances where maybe a site does not have the adequate outdoor space or maybe is perhaps not at the best location to have children outside, running around, traffic concerns, things like that. So that is one clarification that I wanted to make, but I think it would give the commission a little bit of discretion in terms of where these would be cited and making sure that they do meet the requirements and sort of the expectations of the community for safe and reliable childcare facilities.
Got it. And I'll tail off of that. We, childcare and childcare facilities are very difficult to cite. They are, for all the reasons in terms of the build-out, and there's certainly not enough of them. And when we think about adding lower income or any demographic, quite frankly, wherever you are in the income scale, childcare is a really hard thing to get. And different from the bullet point that we have at the end here, which is family daycare homes, those are fundamentally different than institutionalized childcare. For instance, the largest childcare we have here in Menlo Park is GeoKids, which is in the USGS campus. I had the privilege of being a board member there for a period of time. And it is the level of care that is provided through an organization, something that's accredited, something that has the professional development, something that has the ability to pay a living wage. There's benefits that only accrue to childcare at scale, which is fundamentally different than childcare, in-home childcare. And anything that this housing element can do to provide incentives for childcare on site is a tremendous response to the densification that we're talking about here. And it's an opportunity, because we're talking about zoning regulations, and this is an opportunity to provide any incentives available to get these cited and get these up and running, these commercial childcare centers. Because when you have one or two parents working, it's very, very hard to find the childcare that you need. And this is often overlooked in our planning process. So with that, let me go back again to you, Mr. Smith. So other than, so recognizing a community need for it, recognizing that we may use, may lose GeoKids at the USGS because they're on a soon-to-be month-to-month lease, is there anything we can do as part of this process, this zoning exercise, to identify, further identify possible childcare sites or incentivize in any way childcare at scale in any of these buildings that there can be business-run childcares? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Just off the top of my head, I'm thinking that some of these sites that we're talking about right now for the neighborhood mixed-use district are fairly small. The second part of the conversation around this topic related to some of the larger C1, C1C sites, the C2 site at the Sharon Heights Shopping Center, maybe those would have more adequate open space and facilities in order to accommodate that. We have not built in childcare centers as conditional or permitted uses on those, for those zoning districts, so that might be a way to accommodate it.
And what were those ones that you singled out, Mr.?
C1, C1C, C2, and potentially some in the office zoning district.
Got it. And I will say that similar to sports recreation fields, when done on a project-by-project basis, you don't get very far. It has to be, you start now at the zoning level in order to be able to make those happen. So I'll make a recommendation as part of the study session. One of my recommendations will be that C1, C1C, C2, O, be... I guess a permitted, it's tough to, let me leave it to staff to consider them for permitted or conditional, with a hope of the elevation to permitted. And then consideration of incentives for incentivizing the, for space in the building to be developed as a childcare center, a community-serving childcare center. Is that something that we can look at?
And if I may, Commissioner Barnes, I think we heard your recommendation loud and clear. As you know, these amendments that are being brought forward right now are to implement the housing element programs. We didn't notice an expansion of commercial childcare centers as part of this consideration, but we can certainly note that request. And I would actually recommend that we bring that back for further consideration in a separate item, if that's the request of the commission. And we can make that, we can make it clear to the council that that's the commission's recommendation.
I appreciate that. Sometimes it's difficult to understand the when and the what that's appropriate, but the need still remains. So I'll take that under advisement. And, you know, I don't know the temperature of my fellow commission members, but I think childcare is a fundamental right in a community need, and anything we can do to that end is helpful. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Barnes. And Ms. Wagner, did you mean bring it up for the November 6th? Bring it up as an item for November 6th to include in the recommendation to city council? Is that what you were suggesting?
I'm suggesting that it's not part of the actual text amendments that are brought back to you on November 6th, but that you could make a recommendation to the council that you think that should be looked at in the future.
Ah, okay. Well, if it's helpful, I would, just from a personal experience, based on my personal experience, I would say support that. I think many people have one-on-one nannies and then later on we'll see in-home daycares. And I think there is definitely, you know, I don't know what it is now, but one to two-year waitlist for something in between, like large rat-scale childcare. So I would support prioritizing, highlighting that as a need in our community. Commissioner Riggs?
Just if it helps, I would second both your comment and Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Any other discussion on, I believe we're on the CMU topic? And if not, feel free to share your thoughts on, I believe it was the existing zoning districts, C1, C1C, C2, that will remain, but will have some modification to them. districts, C1, C1C, C2, that will remain, but will have some modification to them.
And I think that would be the, that would be the portion that I would have to accuse myself.
I might be misunderstanding. For some reason, I thought that that portion you could partake in.
Through the chair, Commissioner Riggs, the specific portion would be the office, discussion around the office district, but it, it's your discretion to.
If you'll call that out, I mean, there's always a chance no one will have anything to say about the office district, but I doubt it.
Entirely true. And again, I, okay. Commissioner Schindler.
I'll be more brief this time. As it relates to C1, I was wondering why there was no setback requirement spelled out, just by comparing it to the setback requirement. There were setbacks for C1C. Wasn't sure why.
Yeah. In the C1 district, the setbacks are smaller than in C1C has some pretty large setback requirements. So that's why it's called out specifically as modifying those. In the C1 district, it would be 30 feet front, 20 feet side, and 20 feet rear. Whereas in C1C currently, it can be as much as 75, well, 75 feet required for the front, 75 feet for the rear, abutting a residential district, and then 30 feet interior side. So more significant setbacks there with the idea that in that district, trying to get a certain amount of open space for potential residents may be difficult. And also allowing more of the building site to be used for residential uses for some of these areas where maybe they have a large parking lot, but it's closer than 75 feet from the street.
Thank you. So in short, C1C needed, we needed to change them. And in C1, they stand as currently zoned. Okay. And I think my final comment is about C2, the Sharon Heights Shopping Center. I think there was healthy discussion in our last commission meeting, there was some discussion at council, we've heard some public comment here today. So I think it's just worth reiterating that we started with a conversation about height, I think, and then the adjustments to density came as a follow-on to that. Is that correct?
That's correct. When we went to the city council study session, there was a specific request that if we double the height, then we should look at density increases as well.
And my understanding is that what's laid out here as a proposal of requiring an equivalent amount of non-residential gross floor area, so in other words, keeping the same amount of commercial slash retail is the mechanism for keeping that neighborhood-serving, commercial and retail in this space. Is that a correct interpretation of that proposal here?
Right. A redevelopment of the site would need to require the equivalent amount of the non-residential uses essentially that existed. In order to not be too prescriptive about an exact amount, we did include a potential for a use permit to modify that if needed.
Thank you. So I think that helps me sort of think about the responses we got in letters to the city and also the person who spoke during, opened during public comments, just sort of inquiring about the ability to retain Safeway and some of the other stores that are up there. Because while they are large, that is a large shopping center, it is also neighborhood-serving. I think the discussion on council was that they were comfortable with 60 feet and the density of 60 dwelling units per acre. And then if the right, if other opportunities come up, it could potentially change those numbers. I share that comfort. And that's it on that one.
Thank you. Commissioner Schindler. Commissioner Barnes, left hand.
Yes, I didn't know if, is Mr. Eric have a comment? Yes, I want to weigh in and say that I think the non-residential requirements that are throughout the zoning ordinance are both entirely reasonable, and I think they promote the well-being of the community, so I'm supportive. And specific to the, to the one in Sharon Heights, look, I would have rather seen more density there and more height in that area, but I think that ship has sailed. But for sure, I support the floor that's being recommended, and I also believe that the non-residential requirement in this and in others is well-thought-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I had a, just a question about the parking in that table. Believe in table two, it's line, yeah, table two, line towards the bottom, 33, set minimum residential parking requirements, and it lists C1, C1C, C2 districts. Is there any parking requirements for the CMU district or?
Right. There are, and they're, for residential uses, they're the same as what's proposed here. So one space minimum, 1.5 maximum. They already, the difference there is that since, since the new CMU district is really the old C2B district, it already has those.
Uses that, okay.
Whereas these don't, since we're adding new residential uses, they don't have a residential parking requirement. So the table is noting that we'll be adding it.
Okay. I thought maybe it was a doing away with parking minimums that was at some point proposed by some commissioners and city council members, but thank you for clarifying that. No? I, yeah, I don't have any other, if no other commissioners have further comments, I don't have anything to add either to what's been discussed. Do you feel you have the feedback for those before we?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, the office.
I'm going to go out to the car, so will you?
Yes. Of course. Thank you.
Vice Chair Doe, just for purposes of the record and clarification, as Commissioner Riggs indicated at the beginning of this meeting, due to the proximity of his personal residence to the O district, he's recusing himself from participation in that portion of the discussion.
Yes. Thank you. So yes, thank you, Ms. Wagner and Commissioner Riggs for clarifying his need to refuse himself from this portion of the discussion. All right. Would anyone, does anyone have comments on this portion of the discussion? Commissioner Eric?
I'll just quickly note, my support for this is similar to all the other things we've been talking about in this vein, and I would be excited to see mixed-use development at these sites. I would also like to request if the chair would so grant it that maybe after this discussion, we take a quick break.
I would. You read my mind, and thank you for the suggestion. And thank you for your comment. And I agree with that. I actually, I don't have any additional comments either. Similar spirit as the previous changes. Think Commissioner Schindler may have some comments.
Thank you. I only have one, and it hadn't occurred to me in preparation, but I'll ask it anyways. Does, would, the design standards that are proposed, would they apply here? Why or why not? I don't see them listed, but I'm assuming there's a good reason for that.
The office district already has its own design standards. They mirror a lot of what's proposed pretty closely. We are proposing just adding in a couple of additional modulation requirements to make it more consistent with the RMU zoning district nearby.
So most of what would be needed is already there, but perhaps with a couple of the small additions. Great. Thank you. That was, that's all I have on the office side of things. I'm very supportive of including this set of parcels and setting them up for the opportunity to be mixed, mixed-use and residential.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Just gonna look over at you. Nope, nothing. Great. So why don't we take a break and also let Commissioner Riggs that we've finished discussing that portion? It's 9:23, and let's plan to reconvene 9:30?
Agreed.
All right. So we are ready and reconvened, and so let's, let's keep moving on. I believe the next one is multifamily zoning district provisions, and these are the ones affecting the R3 and R4 zoning districts. Open to any commissioner questions, clarifications, or comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. If I could ask staff through the chair, we're indicating 30 dwelling units per acre. We're indicating 30 dwelling units per acre for R3 and up to 20 dwelling units per acre for other R3 sites, based on square footage, larger. This is prior to the application of any density bonus. Is that correct?
That's right.
So potentially, we could have... Is there a density bonus that will double the density? Actually, at the moment, I can't recall. How high can that 30 dwelling units per acre go?
So, Commissioner Riggs, so I believe you were talking about a density bonus with respect to either state density bonus law or the AHO. So just as a reminder, this, one of the two sites that are being contemplated for the higher 20 dwellings, the acre, is on our site inventory list, but is not subject to the AHO. So the AHO would not be applicable, but state density bonus law would be. And so the maximum there would be 80% density bonus for 100% affordable development project. So...
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Ms. Chau, could you just explain that first part again? There's, the AHO applies to R3 districts that are opportunity sites, but there's only one, and it's the Flood School site that is the exception. Is that right?
So the, if I may just step back and clarify, so the affordable housing overlay is applied to all of our housing opportunity sites in addition to the R3 sites around downtown.
Around downtown, sorry, yeah.
Yes. The Flood School site that we were referring to is one of the two parcels that meet that 100,000 minimum square foot lot size, is on the inventory list. However, it was identified specifically through our conversations that the AHO would not be applicable to that site.
But the state, but the state?
But the state density bonus law would be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And a follow-up question. I recall that if we include a site in our housing element, and it is not developed during the seven-year term, that it then rolls over to become eligible for builder's remedy. Is that correct?
So the builder's remedy applies if the city does not have an adopted housing element. And in some people would argue, if you don't have an element that has been certified by HCD, but that's a question that has not been finally answered by the courts yet. The fact that you have a reuse site, if you will, or a site that didn't develop, is a different question. And there are also no net loss provisions that apply if a site is developed at a different, a lower density or at a lower capacity than identified in your housing element. So it may be that you're thinking of the no net loss provisions, but with respect to reuse sites, we don't know yet what the housing element law is going to say seven years from now about reuse sites. So currently, if you have a site in your sites inventory that was, if it was a vacant parcel, if it was included in two prior cycles or a non-vacant parcel that was included in one, there are special rules that apply to being able to use those sites to provide capacity for lower income arena. But the fact that you have a site on the sites inventory in this current element that isn't developed during the planning period, doesn't open it up to a builder's remedy issue right now.
All right. So the only difference would be the administrative processing. For example, it would no longer be discretionary review.
If you utilize the site again, and if the rules stayed the same, that's accurate.
Well, if it rolls over because it never got developed.
So you're going to have another housing element cycle coming up in eight years, and you're going to have to go through the analysis again of what sites to include. And if you include a non-vacant site and the rules remain the same, then that site would have to be rezoned to allow projects that include 20% affordable to lower income households to be by right.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Schindler?
Thank you. My question is about design standards for the R3, and whether that was something that is contemplated or appropriate, similar to the ones we've discussed in the other contexts.
At this time, we have not proposed design standards for the R3 district. It is, so currently, the way that the code is set up is that aside from a single-family home or a duplex, there's a requirement for architectural control from the planning commission. So properties in the R3 district, as of now, would still be subject to an architectural control process for a multifamily project. Yeah, I would add that they could also, they could be subject to SB 330 if a developer were to apply for that. And then in that case, you know, we have just the basic development regulations in place at this time.
Thank you for clarifying that. What strikes me is that may, having to go through the architectural control and coming to planning commission is putting time, effort, and money requirement on the developer in those instances. Whereas design standards give people a starting point for thinking about what it is that the city expects from them in order to maintain a specific look and intended look and feel. So that's something that I think it would be good to consider if that can not affect, if it can be done without affecting the timeline. And that's it for me.
Commissioner Eric?
Thank you. I would be interested in understanding reactions from my fellow commissioners to a proposal to make, or thinking about a proposal to make uniform the R3 districts throughout the city. So right now, there's a proposed distinction between R3 around downtown, which is 30 dwelling units an acre, and other R3 districts, which I believe are 20 dwelling units an acre. And I would be interested in looking at making it 30 across the city. From looking at the map, the R3 districts that are not in downtown are primarily located in Linfield Oaks along Waverly Street and then by the VA campus on Willow. Both of these are adjacent to other areas that we've discussed tonight that are proposed to have mixed-use developments. And so I think there would be both benefit, as we've discussed, in spreading density throughout the city as a means to meet our housing goals, and also to further increase the vibrancy of those corridors, which we're already investing in via this plan.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, yes. Sorry, I was pulling up the map. Please.
So this question did come up at the city council study session where they reviewed very similar proposals in August. And there were a couple of potential issues identified with expanding it citywide, one being that a number of R3 parcels are located in the Bell Haven neighborhood along Pierce Road and Willow Road. There's a pretty long line of R3 parcels. And we'd made a conscious effort as part of affirmatively furthering fair housing to try to have as minimal effect as possible on District 1. So that was, that was one potential reason. And then the other being that the way that we had studied the project and how we have noticed it and explained it to property owners is that these changes would be specific to R3 around downtown. And the idea of trying to increase density in areas close to transit and more walkable services. And so the concern there was that potentially increasing densities outside of that area may need some more review to implement.
I appreciate that feedback. I will say that it is not my intent to have this significantly affect Bell Haven. So if there was a way to do this that did not affect Bell Haven, I think that's very reasonable. Again, if I'm reading the map right, and maybe I'm not, but a lot of the other areas zoned R3, particularly in Linfield Oaks, directly across from El Camino, across El Camino from the downtown area, are themselves also located close to transit. So I think there's worth in considering that people might want to live there as well. I can say as someone who used to live there, but doesn't anymore, that one of the reasons I enjoyed living there was indeed proximity to the Menlo Park Caltrans Station.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes. So specific, in specific response to the query, I think the exercise is to densify the downtown area specific to that, which is approximate, directly approximate to transit. So I think, so for me, I think it's currently appropriately allocated, and I think that spread is, is a spread that's not congruent with the co-location to transit. So for that reason, I think for this, for the R3, is a step a little bit too far in terms of what we were solving for, or what we are solving for through the housing element and being approximate to transit, and more specifically, the Caltrans Station. So that's, that's how I weigh on that.
While others are considering their comments, I'll just add on and say that at our previous meeting in August, a community member also brought up the issue of making, applying that change to all R3 districts across the community. And I think the commission generally also supported it. And in this, in the staff report, I think, you didn't, I don't know if you mentioned it just now, I was looking at the map, but I think in the staff report, you also have a rationale is that it might increase the number of units to be on what was studied in the SEIR. But in light of the discussion that the city council had in terms of not creating more residential development in Bell Haven, I appreciate the reply you just had too about not affecting the R3 districts in District 1. But Commissioner Eric, you bring up a very good point, and I think we did, along with the city council, want to explore that. So I just want to acknowledge that. Any other burning discussion before we move on to modifications to the downtown specific And I'm assuming, staff, you have the feedback? All right. Well then, please feel free to comment on, ask questions about modifications to the downtown specific plan.
Clever end question. Are we following the agenda bullet points, or where, what bullet point are we on right now?
It is possible that I am, I've mixed things up, but I am following, if you're on the hard copy, I'm on that first page of the agenda item, and those bullet points in bold. I don't see a page number. It's page 11 and 12, if you're looking at the PDF.
We are looking at, so if we use these paragraphs, then we've completed 1, 2, 3, 1 being the AHO.
I see this.
And then we covered the commercial, and then we covered R3.
Okay.
Right, we're at the last three bullet points, if we would follow that agenda.
Okay, so I am following somehow, a list that has somehow a different order.
Specific plan being that the 7 and the next 8.
Yes. And I'm fine with whatever word I just want to track the discussion.
Sure.
You're the chair. You call it.
If you are okay with that, let's go ahead and move to the downtown specific plan. I feel like we just want to tackle some of these heavy hitters first. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for clarifying, though. Well, I'll start by saying I appreciate staff revising, going from the eight sub-districts to including 10 in the update. And I did actually want to follow up on a question that Commissioner Riggs asked in the beginning about setbacks. As scale increased, were setbacks adjusted, adjacent to, you know, neighboring, single-family developments? Just want to follow up on what Commissioner Riggs was asking about in the beginning.
So we have not modified the setbacks. There's the building profile, and then there's the facade height requirements that have been adjusted. But for each of the districts, the setbacks, just trying to give you a general idea here, some of them seem to have, so a rear setback, typically meaning probably up against a residential district of 20 feet. Others have a 10-foot setback. So for instance, I'm looking at the northeast low-density district. That one has a rear setback of 20 feet. And then it has side setbacks between 10 and 25 feet. But we have made efforts to try to make the building massing scale with the density and the heights that council directed.
Okay, that's helpful, because I think earlier I heard 10, I heard 7 to 12, and that made me nervous. But now you're seeing rear setbacks are 20, which is greater. And like you're pointing out, I think, I'm not so concerned about setbacks along El Camino Real as setbacks on the rear neighborhood facing.
Yeah, I would say setbacks for the rear property line are generally between 10 and 20 feet. The ones that I was referencing earlier on in response to Commissioner Riggs' question were actually the front setbacks, and so those are the much smaller.
That is reassuring, more reassuring. So thank you for clarifying that. I think that's all I have for now, is that question. But Commissioner Riggs, please.
Yeah, thank you. So I made note at our last meeting, but I chose not to contradict an opinion that was expressed up here at the DAS. Someone expressed their appreciation for the eight- or 10-story tower that's at University and Valparaiso, approximately, and how that tower exists perfectly harmoniously with the single-family neighbors. how that tower exists perfectly harmoniously with the single-family neighbors. Having several years ago, had both lunch and dinner in the backyard of a house a quarter mile away from that tower, I can tell you, you can't stop looking up at the balconies and the people standing there looking back at you. So to say that an eight to 10-story tower has no effect on single-family next door would not only be inappropriate, but frankly, it was about a quarter mile away where I was, sitting in the backyard of one of the small lots on those cul-de-sacs off of Valparaiso. The adjacency of building height is meaningful. I will say that if I today went to look at one of those condos a quarter mile away, or even just two lots away, and made the observation that there was a residential tower next door, I would be adjusting my decision yes or no, and based on the price, and maybe I would buy that condo. It's a, because it's a situation that already exists. However, if I had that condo, townhouse, if on the other hand, I bought that townhouse and two years later, city council rezoned property for eight to 10 stories, I don't think I would be pleased. And I would certainly have sympathy for all of my neighbors if they were not pleased. It's easy to forget that the reason Menlo Park exists, and the reason that it was until less than 10 years ago, a predominantly residential neighborhood, is that people moved here so that they were not in San Francisco, and they were not in San Jose, and they were not in downtown Redwood City, and they were not in downtown San Mateo. So while it certainly benefits future residents if we build towers, and perhaps 20% of them are what we generously call affordable, and which many people on a single income simply could not afford, for the people who are already here and are under the impression that Menlo Park is their home, the expansion of building mass, I think significantly more than of dwelling unit count, the building mass adjacent to the little spot that you managed to save up and buy into and live house poor for eight or 10 years until you could get ahead of the mortgage, it's just, it's just not a winner for people who are already here. And when I go back to my neighborhood, it's not theoretical future residents who come up to me and ask, so how are the decisions going with the housing element? It's people who already live here. So pardon me if I seem anachronistic, but I can't help but color my reaction to some of the proposals, state mandated or otherwise, when I see that we're going to have 60-foot buildings, or for that matter, 40-foot buildings, if they're next to residential. So getting to this area that we're talking about now, when we worked on the specific plan, and I can tell you, we had meetings here not just for months, but for years, going through that plan. We were careful to make sure that the back of the specific plan zones backing up against single-family were stepped down so that the single-family residence, whether it's a bedroom window or a backyard, was not overshadowed by the adjacent building. We did not try to make the commercial-zoned areas invisible, because frankly, that wasn't possible. And that was too strict a goal, even though, you won't be surprised, neighbors did ask for that. But we kept down the massing. If you have a two-story face that is 20 feet away from your back fence, that happens to be the same setback as if you're building a one-story house. And it has been for decades in Menlo Park. So if you're building two stories, now that's also consistent with historical Menlo Park zoning. If, however, just 10 feet back from that two-story is a couple more, what you see from your backyard is four stories. It's, we developed the facade concept so that when you're walking down Santa Cruz, or you're walking down El Camino, and you're on a sidewalk next to the building, you're really only aware of the facade height, because you can't see over the parapet and see what is recessed 10 or 12 feet back. But when your backyard faces the backyard of a very large building, you definitely see it. So I'd like to point out two things. One, a 20-foot setback is not in the least impressive. It's just baseline. And secondly, that the recess that is above the second floor really matters to the adjacent neighbors. And if that portion of that lot is 180 feet deep, then perhaps it's reasonable to ask that the third and fourth floors be set back more than 10 feet, maybe even more than 20 feet. I'd just throw that out as something worth considering.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Commissioner Barnes?
I'm sorry. Where I'll go. So Commissioner Riggs, did you have a substantive suggestion, or it's more food for thought?
Oh, thank you. No, it's food for thought. I'm very much hesitant to come up with a number here from the DS. That's just, I think it's just not appropriate. And frankly, I'm not sure that I'd want to do it sitting at a planning desk either, at least not without a diagram and without a couple of field visits. But my experience off of Valparaiso did tell me that height is not something that is ameliorated like 50 decibels of the property line. It's, it's there for longer. And it cannot be hidden, but it does need to have some, some kind of consideration. And I think a diagram or two and some field visits would help.
So queuing off of that, I think the concept of transitioning is an important concept. I want to draw a distinction. When the, when the Connect Menlo was adopted, if you think about Connect Menlo, there was no, there has been no and was no residential added or built in the Bellhaven neighborhood. The development of the residential is all contiguous to Bellhaven, but it was very specific that it was for the M2 area. So you, when the placemaking was done in Connect Menlo, for instance, for residential, speaking for the residential development there, there was a whole exhaustive placemaking process, whether that's circulation, whether that is placebo, whether that is the development of what went there. The, the concept of densification in the downtown specific area needs to happen, and it's the right thing to happen there. I think there's the opportunity, the opportunity that we don't have is we're not talking, as there was in the Connect Menlo process for residential, where you took a blank slate, and you said you have this area, you have a limited number of owners, and it was a master-planned area in terms of all the aspects that you would want to see from an urban planning perspective. And there are natural transitions from the residential that's in the Bellhaven neighborhood. And if you look at where the multifamily is in that area, there's natural transitions from one to another. And you don't have 70, 70-feet buildings next to single-story dwellings there, because that's not how it's laid out. So I think, I think it's, it's reasonable to look at densification as the outcome. It's also reasonable to understand that this is not that. This, the shoot, when you're doing infill, you have to understand that you're already working within a built environment. The environment in, again, in the Connect Menlo area, specifically where the residential one, was not a built environment from the standpoint of residential. It was a lot of concrete tilt-ups that were scraped, and extensive placemaking happened. So if, when we're contemplating this densification, I believe we can do two things. We can both get the density that we want, but we can also do responsible transitioning from the current built environment that's there, which is going to stay residential, whether it's R1, or R2, or R3, into a much more dense, forget dense, into a much, into forms that have considerably more mass, and that can show up as height. And then of course, obviously, mass going horizontal as well. So I think the concept of transitioning is a very reasonable concept for this. I don't have, I don't have a way to, to chart that out here, but I think not considering that is, is an abdication of what we're supposed to be doing, which is on Planning Commission, both balancing housing element with responsible land use policies. And I think we can bring them together, and I think it's our responsibility to do both, is my thoughts on this topic. Thank you. And I don't have a specific recommendation for that, other than it'd be great to study it and see if we have transitions in place and what they would look like.
So the follow-up question to Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Riggs. First of all, it completely makes sense. If we're going to go high in dense, this is the area to do it. And I, and I'm not saying that Commissioner Riggs and Barnes, they, it's the transition. And so I guess, going back to the other question about setbacks, I mean setbacks is just one element of that transition. Are the design standards for the building massing and modulation, I guess, are those, have those been re-looked at as part of the change in numbers? Is, is this, or when is the appropriate time to do it? Is, I mean, I know it's a lot going on that needs to happen within a few months. But those design standards, building massing modulations, is it just everything went up, or is there a re-opportunity for re-looking at those standards?
The, the standards would still apply here. So wherever there's a modulation required, where it indicates, if it needs to go the full height of the building, then that includes all of the, the new height that, that could be achieved through the changes. There's also, there's a 45-degree building profile that starts at the facade height. So we've adjusted facade heights upward based on the overall height that is going to be changed, but that doesn't negate the requirement for the, sort of the step in of the building profile at 45 degrees to help limit some of that massing as well. And I think it's, it is a balancing act of, if this is the area to densify in the city, there's limited ways to achieve that on these parcels. So trying to balance, you know, if we increase setbacks, then that means either you go up, or you make the units small. And so we've tried to weigh all of the different factors in place to not make any one of them overly extreme, and maybe that's a little subjective, but trying to find that balance of accommodating the potential for larger units, which means, you know, a certain density, accommodating the idea that we want, we need to increase the height, because some of the lots are smaller, and they probably won't redevelop unless they do have that availability. And then also, the fact that there are setbacks in place currently, if we were to increase those, then that means the height goes up, or the, the larger units go away. So maybe not the perfect answer, but it is that juggling of, of those different factors.
Thank you. Just looking over here to check in with other commissioners. Commissioners in there.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the step-up FAR that's been proposed. I think it's evolved a little bit since we saw it last in August. And I wanted to be sure that I understood the, the origin of some of the changes. So, and maybe this, maybe I'm not recalling exactly the details from August, but the, the step-up FAR requires at least 50% of the building to be residential, but no more than 65 in certain of the zoning districts. It's the no more than 65 that I was just curious to, to understand the rationale about.
So I think there's a couple of different, different factors that went into that. One was, I think, to a lot of the, the concerns that we've heard about maintaining a mix of uses, not trying to encourage those mixed-use buildings, and getting residential and non-residential, providing that mix of opportunities. And then the second piece of that is attempting to maintain some discretion in terms of the residential component of the building. So under SB 330, I think if it's 2/3s residential or more, then they could apply for that at, apply for SB 330, which is, you know, not, not a bad thing, but having it at 65% helps to maintain the discretionary process as well.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the three-part requirements for the size of the, average size of the residential unit between about, more than 1,000 but under 2,000. And then either, you know, the count of two, how many, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, or the units being for sale. Those, just to be clear, it's either A or B, plus the unit size. So now there are essentially, one, there's one required criteria, and then one of the two others. So there are, you have to hit two out of those things in order to hit the step-up FAR.
I would, I, you're-
Reading it correctly.
Yeah, I think there's two requirements. So it's the 50% of the, 50 to 65% of the building FAR for residential uses is one requirement. The second requirement is the average net residential unit size of 1,000 square feet. And then the third is the option between the two. So you can either provide half the units with two or more bedrooms, including 10% of that as three or more bedrooms, or you can provide for-sale units.
All, all of them are for sale?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And then the final thing I'll just call attention to, because it's, it's come up in terms of, of questions from the public. I think this requirement that the storefronts along Santa Cruz Avenue retain at least 1.0 FAR of commercial use speaks to some of the recurring themes we've heard about, ensuring we keep commercial and residential, or excuse me, commercial and retail that we already- have. So I think that was a specific question we heard a little bit tonight about particularly about people who live nearby because that is their neighborhood serving, that is their neighborhood serving retail and commercial.
That's right. That in attachment L, I'd also like to point out, in addition to the Main Street overlay, Main Street retail frontage overlay along Santa Cruz Avenue, there are a couple of other notes, there are notes four and five, and that's a limitation on office uses to one half of, of FAR. And then there's another one about limitation on some offices and medical offices. I guess it depends on the sub district, but in certain cases it's limited to one third of the FAR. So those provisions come into play as well.
Thank you. I think those are both very relevant comments considering some of the dialogue we've, we've heard to this evening. I support them. Commissioner Eric, thank you, Commissioner Shindler.
I want to sort of re-ask a question that I asked before, but as we've discussed, the downtown area is the primary focus of densification and efforts to create more housing. So I do just want to ask, given the feedback from HCD, what confidence does staff have that the proposals for increased density in downtown will enable us to hit our arena goals when we resubmit?
The, the capacity, the realistic capacity calculations that we're using for the downtown area are showing much more conservative densities than what we could actually achieve. And so in discussions with HCD, they, they have not expressed concerns in particular to, to this strategy.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Barnes.
Thank you. Through the, through the chair or staff, going back to the, the 50% FAR office max requirement. So I'm sorry if I'm going to be redundant for a moment, but that's going to be maintained on Santa Cruz Avenue where there cannot be an exceedance of 50% allocated for office. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
So along Santa Cruz Avenue, there's the Main Street retail frontage overlay, and that requires property fronting Santa Cruz Avenue to have a minimum 1.0 FAR of commercial uses, which would be retail, restaurants, those types of uses.
Thank you. And yes, but on the flip side of that, utilization for the purposes of office is capped at 50%. Correct?
Yes, I need to look a little bit. I don't know that it applies to every single one of the 10 sub districts, but most of them do limit office uses to one half of FAR.
Got it. And I will say for a moment, I think one of the reasons why it's really difficult to get functioning, to get the, to get Santa Cruz Avenue by, by way of example, to be functioning district, for instance, for development, A, we're going at it from the standpoint of allowing for higher densities, higher heights. That's one way. One of the problems that I have seen over time is when you try to mix product types, when you say, great, we're going to try to do ground floor retail and then we're going to have some office in there, and then we're going to have some retail, excuse me, office and then residential. It's tough to design a building and often folks don't want to own buildings where you've got three different product types in it, where you have to be a residential landlord and you've got to be an office landlord, and then you've got commercial on the first I've always thought that it would be better to have buildings that could incentivize for straight up residential, which is what we're doing, but on the flip side, allow office to be, if you want to have office in one building, exceeding the 50% cap, because then you can get, then you get more development because it's commercially viable, because you're only doing, in that case, two product types, office and, and commercial. And then on the other product type, you get residential and commercial on the ground floor. But this policy where we've seen having restrictions on office and limiting it to a certain amount, so then you have to get three product types in one building, hasn't worked. And maybe offering more heights is going to work. I'm not convinced that it is, but I think this cap on office doesn't work for vitality in this, for instance, on Santa Cruz Avenue. And I, and I'm not convinced that just adding more height is going to get us there. So I don't agree with it. I understand the concept behind it, but I don't think it serves the economic development of this area, and it hasn't in the past. Maybe HEI will solve for it. I don't think so though. So I don't in fact, support the, the cap on office. I think you should be able to do an office with retail on the ground floor. And then if you want to do residential right next to it, do residential with retail on the ground floor. I think you get more development that way and you get more willing owners, because owners don't want to own three product types in one building. So I just want to be on the record for, for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. And actually, do you mind if I ask you a question about what you just expressed?
Sure.
Do you think there's any risk that you get more office than is needed as some?
Well, I think, I think you cap it out. I think you can say across a district, I mean, you, instead of bifurcating it by parcel.
By bill, yeah.
Because when you bifurcate it by parcel, you get these mini, mini buildings that are, again, for the, I don't want to be redundant, for those reasons, you don't get the economic development. But if you said large, we will allow on one block, there to be preponderance in this building, all office and then this building, all residential. Then I think you get the mix you want and you get the development that you want. So you mix it by percentage across an area as opposed on a parcel by parcel basis. That's how I would do it.
And I might've missed that explanation in your, in your previous comment, but.
You teased it out. Thank you. I wasn't, I didn't go that far. Thank you.
That's, that's a helpful way to, to think of it. Commissioner Eric.
Sorry. I was actually going to say something similar, which is I think that makes a lot of sense, but I'm, and I'm curious if that's workable from a, if we could write a policy that, that makes that happen in practice. So I guess I'm sort of curious for staff or, or for your ideas on, like, can we actually write a, in this district, we want this percentage and then actually enforce that as in the fog of war as, you know, landlords come in and do whatever they're going to do?
And I'll shut up here in a moment. I mean, we, we do cap, right? We do caps in areas for commercial, for office, right? So there are aggregate gross floor area caps, right? Or unit caps if it's residential. So, I mean, it's a common practice to take a district and say, you can only do X square foot of office, or you can do, you know, Y units, or however you want to do that. But you segregate by use type, and then you say, across an area, we're going to cap that out, but we're not going to do it on a parcel basis. And it's already done. Downtown specific plan was already prescriptive in terms of the residential that could be built there, I think it was 600 and some odd units, and then you have an office cap and so forth. You just put in the mechanism to have it continue to be district wide. And I'm not saying it's easy, but you, we, it was done in Connect Menlo, right? Connect Menlo has caps on office, has caps on residential. It didn't say on a particular parcel, you had to do, you know, XYZ 101 constitution, you had to do a certain amount. It was across the district. You had X allocations by product type, and then it was first come, first served. Well, if we want vibrancy, it's not such a bad thing, right? If, if we, so I'll just stop there.
I will just say, that makes sense. And for the purposes of moving us forward, if in the limited time we have between now and January 31st, there's a way to incorporate that feedback, then I, I think that makes a lot of sense and I would, I would be supportive of that in the interest of creating the vibrancy that we're trying to. And I think, I think these are good points.
Did you want to respond?
Yes. I think that's something, that's another item that the, the Planning Commission could make a recommendation to City Council to tackle separately. My main concern about it is that these are existing limits that are already in place and we have not noticed or informed property owners that we may be changing what they could do with their non-residential development under this, under this project. And so really trying to keep it focused on the residential, at least through January 31st of 2024, and then if council so chose, they could take up the, the commission's recommendation.
Commissioner Riggs.
Thank you. Not to offer any solutions, but I will just throw out that when, you know, roughly a dozen years ago, we enacted the downtown specific plan, the key to developing Santa Cruz, and for that matter, Menlo or Old Grove, is that the lots could be moved to an FAR of 2.0 and some of them were already 2.0, but they were only occupying 1.0 FAR because they had only bought that much parking with the parking districts back in the 1950s. If you don't have more parking, you can't provide more FAR. And if you do the math, if you have a 8,000 square foot lot with an 8,000 square foot building on it, and you knock it down and you build a two story, it turns out that the bottom floor has to be parking. So what you have for rent is 8,000 square foot, which is where you started. And somehow it's hard to get investors to pay for that. So the key always came back to parking. We have certain parking requirements that make sense. They do for retail because our retail is not all walkable. As you can tell by our parking lots at lunchtime, people drive in. And unless you happen to be near a train station to begin with, you can't get to downtown Menlo Park without a car. And that is probably still going to be the situation 50 years from now. So if we need parking, the conclusion was that we needed to build a parking structure. And this is necessary for both office workers and retail, and they compete. If you increase the number of office workers you have, they will come into town, take the retail parking space and go up and occupy their seat for nine hours. Retailers have a problem with that. So it keeps coming back to the fact that we need parking. We don't want to encourage people to use cars, but we have yet to provide a reasonable alternative. We don't even have a long range plan for a reasonable alternative and people will drive. So if we're going to try to add vibrancy, we actually have the same problem that we had 12 years ago, which is that we need to provide a parking option for the owners of the downtown lots so that they can build it new. A lot of these lots, I would say possibly 90% of these lots are owned for their increase in real estate value, not for their tenant rental income. And as long as someone in some real estate office says, oh, you know, that property that you bought for eight million, it's now worth 12, they're happy. And they're not worried about thousands of dollars per month, they're worried about millions. So at some point, if we want to revitalize downtown, we're going to have to bite that, that apple. And I'd be happy to hear from Deanna, who has tracked this need and this process for a very long time and probably has more knowledge on it than any of us. But in terms of downtown getting investment on, for example, Santa Cruz, I'd be curious through the chair, what, what staff thinks.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So yes, definitely economic vitality and vibrancy has been a topic for many years now, starting the, with the implementation or the, the vision of the specific plan. I think that hearkens back to 20, or 2008 or so, and with the adoption of the plan in 2012. And certainly the City Council has emphasized as one of its priorities, economic vitality. And so I think you mentioned parking, and so that is definitely one of the items that the specific plan highlights is consolidating parking, looking at parking garages to provide potential opportunities. There were some location, three locations identified in the specific plan, and that is part of the conversation that we will be having as part of our, you know, what should we be doing with our surface parking lots? Certainly affordable housing is identified as one of the options through our housing element. And so as our Assistant City Attorney discussed earlier today, looking at a feasibility study, looking at what can be done, looking at what are the mix of uses that are appropriate to help bring people down into the downtown, provide the parking that has been requested, what is the right parking amount, and what lots are best suited for what types of needs. So I think there's definitely more conversation to be had, but certainly vibrancy is, is something that is on everyone's mind.
I had, and thank you, Ms. Chow. I had a couple of points I just wanted to make before we left the category. One is that in support of anyone and everyone who has pressed for design standards, the larger the project that comes to Menlo Park, I think the more we will want some level of design review. It's not that we haven't had good projects. We've been very lucky. We've had some great projects, design wise, come to Menlo Park. But we won't always, and it is a bottom line thing. And the other point I wanted to make was, was just to back up what I already see is an inclination toward units for sale. One of the things that we saw, I, I spent some time on the board of Habitat for Humanity, and it was terribly rewarding and also very inevitable whenever we had an owner as opposed to a renter on a property. They took care of the property and the property looked better and the neighbor across the street started to think, well, I guess mine could look better. And it really works. There is a difference in attitude. And then when it comes to downtown and you have a townhouse or a condo, there's not the same literal effect, but there's the same cognitive effect where the property is more valued and there is a actual literal investment in Menlo Park. For sale units are the best. That's my pitch. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. I feel like we had a good discussion on the downtown area and looking around, if there's no further discussion, I suggest we move on, because we have a few more topics to hit, the next one being, three more, ministerial review for sites from previous cycle, from the previous cycle and, and if they include 20% affordable housing. Commissioner Barnes.
And as I read this, I suspect we, we may have some questions, but essentially this is, this is per state law. So there's not much, I mean, there's nothing to discuss here other than understanding it because it's prescriptive by state law. And I guess I'll go through to staff, right? This is not discretionary in any way. This is, you're telling us in fact, this is what it is, and we may have a question about it, correct?
Correct. So we had a little bit of discussion previously about reuse sites and if a site's been identified in a prior housing element twice, if it's vacant once, if it's non-vacant, then state law requires that you allow by right housing that includes 20% affordable, if that site is included in your housing opportunity sites list and providing capacity to meet your lower income arena.
Got it. Thank you. So I'm satisfied on this topic.
Great. Any questions? Any questions, Commissioner Riggs?
This just leads back to the point that I just made, that we really need design standards. And if I may, through the chair, just to confirm with Ms. Wagner, if we have objective design standards in place, then the administrative review follows those standards, is that correct?
Correct. So as you all know, under the Housing Accountability Act, any housing development project can only be subject to your objective design and development standards. So that would apply also to the, any kind of by right development, and that staff would be applying those objective design and development standards.
May I through the chair?
Sure.
So for instance, on SB 330, right, it locks in fees, and it locks in, you know, the objective design standards. Do we have an absence in the city? Would you consider the city does not have design standards that can be looked to, or what are the design standards that currently get looked to? For instance, not in, not in the Bayfront, but if it were to be downtown, what would they be looking at? And not the downtown specific plan, I'm sorry, because that is prescriptive. If it was outside downtown specific plan, outside of the Connect Menlo area, and not in those two areas, what would, what would the city look at for design standards?
So currently, we just have in place, in a number of these districts, very basic zoning regulations that set out height, FAR setbacks. There's not, not requirements for modulations or screening of certain things. So outside of the specific plan area, the Bayfront area, and the R4S, I don't believe we have other districts that have the objective design standards, which is why, for, I think, almost all of these that we've brought forward, we are proposing them.
Got it. So I'll just reinforce that, it's an important part of this process, because if you look into a vacuum, you'll see nothing. But with, in design standards, the perception is they create cost, time, and money, when they don't, in fact. With good design standards, create throughput, so people can understand what it is they're getting into, and the community benefits, because it gets something that's somewhat within the agreed-upon idea that we want as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. I agree, and I think Commissioner Schindler has also made many comments, even on the importance of design standards, so thank you for that. So if there's no further questions on that, the residential overlay, and as Mr. Smith explained, this is for sites that don't allow residential use, such as those with a conditional development permit, or some other kind of unique circumstance. Any questions for staff on this? Commissioner Schindler?
Easy one. This feels like this could have been two buckets, two other buckets, instead of one other bucket. The parcels are just very different use cases, and I'm wondering if there was any benefit of creating two, instead of just lumping them all into one?
Would you have a proposed way of split, is there a way that you're thinking of them as...
I was, splitting the ones that already have a CDP from the ones that, that didn't have any residential allow, allowed at that, allowed currently. Because I think, I'm assuming the ones that had CDPs, I actually haven't gone and looked address by address, but the ones that have the CDPs are the address, are the apartment buildings up in the Sharon Heights area. So those were the ones that were unable to have additional residential, as differentiated from the ones that couldn't have any residential. And to me, that they felt like, they felt different enough that I could imagine two different cases, but...
I understand now what you're saying, that you are correct, that there are a couple of apartment complexes on Sharon Park Drive, that are kind of at their max. There is one, one office development with a CDP, I think it's the 2200 Sand Hill Road, and that one, you know, they would have to modify the CDP, or change things around in order to make residential development happen there. I think you can, you can sort of think of it as, it does apply to two different use cases here, but I think what we've attempted to do is make it flexible enough that the same strategy can apply to the two different types of uses. This is what we, I think, referred to previously as the carve-out overlay. So the idea here is really just looking at a site, you know, regardless of what the use or the constraints are, but finding a way to be very flexible about where, where the development happens, and sort of allowing for that flexibility, essentially, was the idea here. But I do understand that there may be two different kinds of parcels that we're looking to apply to.
Thank you. My sort of confusion slash concern is not enough to undo the proposal of just having the one bucket, but thank you for the explanation, supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. And just stop me if I'm racing ahead too recklessly, but I will go ahead and move the discussion to family daycare homes. I believe the Commission has previously expressed support for this change, and no, no contentions, but does anyone have any, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barnes?
Look, it's the state law, there's nothing I can do, but I think if we're solving for access to quality daycare, this isn't it. It isn't it from the standpoint of the quality of care you get in a daycare at scale, that's run well, nor do I think it's fair that someone can be living in a house, and right next door to it, you can have a 14-child daycare the next day in a residential neighborhood. So I can't stop it, but I think it's well-intentioned for access to quality daycare. I think as a community, if we want to solve for it, we need to be looking at zoning, in the zoning process, as a next, you know, as a next step, for how we can bring it into our community, because this isn't it. I think daycares at scale are, that's what quality daycare is. So that's my, this doesn't solve for it, that does. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schindler?
As previously brought up, and we talked about this in August, I'm highly supportive. Like Commissioner Barnes, I think that this is an important issue for the community. I think it's a yet, it's a this and. I do think this is a viable solution for contributing to the deficit of childcare we have here in the area, community, in the city, in the country. There are innumerable possible solutions, this is one of many, to ensure the health of the community and the economic health of the city and the state. So highly supportive. I think this is one of many possible positive solutions.
Yes, absolutely. Well, but I think just the options for people is, you know, for everyone to choose to their each unique family situation, so absolutely part of the solution. So I just want to make sure that staff has what you need on each of those seven bullet points. And I also wanted to, I'm assuming you took better notes than I did on each of those, and I also wanted to just flag some things that came out of this discussion, that you recommended, we recommend to City Council, but to pursue separately and not on the same timeline. And one of them was incentivizing daycares on a larger scale, not talking about this home daycare scale, parks, looking at parks in open space, given the increase in the amount of people who will be living in our community, and finding a viable way to stipulate ratios or amounts of office residential retail across the downtown district, rather than by parcel. So those are the things I took down as things to recommend City Council explore separately, separate from this timeline.
And I want to offer my thank you for noting that, Chair.
Any other thoughts on this exercise? No? Commissioner Schindler?
I hope that going into the November 6th meeting, we have an opportunity just to see very, I would benefit from seeing clear red lines of before and after, just in terms of language. It's very helpful to see how things evolve, not necessarily from all the intermediate steps we've taken along the way in August, in each of the different meetings, but the end product versus the zoning and the existing zoning language today. That would be helpful. Thank you.
So we will prepare resolutions and ordinances, and they'll have, typically what we do is underline for new text, and then strike through for deleted, so you will be able to see before and after on the same sheet, if you will.
Great, thank you. Thank you for asking that. So I will close the Item F public hearing, and...
If I'm...
Oh, my gosh.
We need to have a motion to continue to the date certain, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Before we close that item, yes, the action required is to vote to continue this to a date certain, and that would be the November 6th meeting.
I make a motion that we move to continue to the November 1st, November 5th meeting.
Sixth.
Sixth. Fifth or sixth?
Sixth.
Six?
Sixth.
November 6th. Thank you. November 6th.
And I will second.
A first from Commissioner Barnes, a second from Commissioner Riggs. If there's no questions, we will move to a vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Schindler?
Yes.
I am also a yes, that's five yeses and two absences, so the motion passes. And with that, I will close Item F public hearing, and turn to staff for informational items.
Thank you. I think at this time of the evening, we normally identify what's on the upcoming Planning Commission agenda, and I think you just established what's coming on the November 6th meeting. We do have back-to-back meetings in November, so the 13th will be the second meeting for the Commission, and I believe we have a number of single-family homes that will be brought to that time.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Chow?
No, but I'd like to express my deep appreciation to Ms. Chow, Mr. Smith, Ms. Wagner, for sticking with us almost till 11 o'clock tonight. Thank you so much.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.